If you would like to request a specific language translation, or if you have concerns or suggestions that could help improve this service, please email bctv@info@brattleboro tv.org, or call 802-257-0888. Next, I would like to thank Brattleboro Goes Fourth, the O’Connor and Amadon families, and all the many town staff, volunteers, and contributors who made not just the Fourth of July parade, but the whole day a really wonderful gift to the town. And in particular, the Select Board would like to thank the Department of Public Works, Dan Tyler, Travis, and Emmett Grover, and Adam Fletcher. That is all.
Well, I’m going to jump on that train. And the Recreation and Parks Department also asked me to thank everyone that was involved in the Fourth of July community celebration, which was safe and successful. The Brattleboro Goes Fourth Committee and everyone who participated in the parade are greatly appreciated by the Rec and Parks staff, the Department of Public Works, the Brattleboro Police Department, the Brattleboro Fire Department. And I would also like to thank all of the Rec and Parks staff who really put a lot into making that be a wonderful event again this year. I was asked to read a message to you all from the Assessors Office to Joe Meyer. Joe, we want to thank you for your continued support and your team spirit, your sense of humor, and town knowledge will be greatly missed. We wish you a happy birthday and a well-deserved retirement. Congratulations from your team, Jennifer and Melissa. So Joe Meyer, after many years, is going to be retiring from town service, which is a great loss to us all. And we wish him the best as he moves forward. So BCTV recently attended the Alliance for Community Media’s annual conference, where they picked up six Hometown Media Awards. This really speaks to the level of service that this town gets from BCTV. Two of those awards were produced by the town, which also speaks to the level of service that Seth Thomas delivers to us for helping communicate everything out to everybody. The winning videos included a profile of Officer Deanna Lopez from the Brattleboro Police Department and a public service announcement filmed for Brooks Memorial Library in celebration of National Library Card Sign-Up Month. You can see both of these videos and more on the town’s YouTube channel, so I urge you to check that out. We’d also like to congratulate BCTV on winning an overall excellence award, which they received during the same conference. So really, hats off to BCTV. And then, just to wrap up, just a couple of reminders. So water and sewer bills will be mailed by July 15. Payments due honor before August 15 to avoid late charges of 1% interest and 8% penalty. Tax bills will also be mailed July 15 with payments due each quarter, which are on August 15, November 17, February 17, and May 15, 2026. Interest of 1% is added each quarter after the due dates with an additional 8% penalty, but only after the May 15 due date for that. So that’s all ahead.
Great. Are there Select Board members who would like to comment? Amanda, go ahead.
Me first?
Okay.
Isaac, you go first. I have to prepare myself.
Okay. So first of all, I just wanted to congratulate the Town Manager, John Potter, for winning the race, the cohort that you were in, on the July 4th in the firecracker race. That was great. And wanted to ask for folks who are here tonight, if you haven’t yet signed in, there’s a sign-in sheet over by that door over there. And when you write your name, you write it out clearly, it allows us in our minutes to attribute comments that you make to the correct person and to include the correct spelling of your name. I’ve spent a lot of time Googling people’s names to try to figure out how to spell last names. So appreciate you doing that. Thanks.
Such a good clerk. Thank you. Amanda, are you ready?
Yeah, I am. I’m using my Select Board seat to wish a happy 80th birthday to an important member of our community. Hopefully, he’s watching tonight. We need teachers to teach us about leadership and as a bold leader who reaches out to teach. I’m talking about fearless leadership, generous mentorship to many, a member of our community that believes in Brattleboro and its people. Tom Costello has dedicated his work, working life and career to the community and has served on the boards of the American Legion, Brattleboro Area Habitat for Humanity, and Morningside Emergency Shelter. He’s a veteran of the United States Marine Corps and served in the Vietnam Conflict, earning a Bronze Star and a Purple Heart. A very happy birthday to you, Tom. And thank you for serving Brattleboro and all that you’ve done for us.
Anyone else? Very good. All right, let’s go to public participation. Are there people in the public who would like to discuss a matter that is not on tonight’s agenda? I see Kate’s hands spring right up.
Hi, everybody. Kate O’Connor, Brattleboro. On behalf of the Brattleboro Goes Fourth Committee, which is my brother Kevin and my sister Carrie, we want to thank everybody involved in town government for all they did to help make the parade possible. The Police Department, the Fire Department, the Department of Public Works, the Rec Department, and Carroll Lot. We could not do that parade without town involvement. And we’ve been doing it now for 15 years because 15 years ago, the parade was eyeing extinction. And my father was like, “That will never happen. Our family is going to organize that parade.” So we’re still doing it, but we couldn’t do it without the town. So I really, really want to stress, “Thank you, thank you, thank you.” And we’ll see everybody next year.
Right back at you, Kate. Yes? You. Oh.
Good evening. My name is Charles Monnet, and I’m a 45-year resident of Brattleboro area. And I’d like to propose, we discussed at some point, the proposed closing and gating of the bridges downtown so that pedestrian and bicycling won’t be able to... Is that on?
I think that will be a matter open to discussion in our regular meeting. But thank you, Charles. And would you spell your last name so that Isaac can...
Monnet.
Spell it?
M-O-N-E-T-T-U.
Thank you. Okay, now you. And I see you, Dick. Go ahead.
My name is Silver Krieger. I will spell it when I leave. Been here for about three years. I live on Main Street, and I hope I’m conducting this in the correct time period. The sound of the motorcycles on that street is absolutely overwhelmingly awful for those of us who live right there. I have had my walls literally shake, and I live in a very old sturdy building. I don’t even care so much about the blasting of the music off the motorcycles. It’s more how their pipes are changed in some way. I don’t completely understand. Some cars also do this. And I feel like those residents deserve better, those people who live on Main Street. We pay taxes. We care about the town. We have children. We have babies. We have, in my building, seniors, a disabled senior. Everybody has been really impacted by this issue. And I hope that something can be done about it. I did come here some time ago, and I did speak to an employee here who is no longer here. I believe his name was Patrick. I brought the issue up. He gave me a printout of noise laws. They only were really things like in apartment buildings when your neighbor is making too much noise and such. He said, “Well, some people will want this. Some people want that.” So, you know. So I just felt really like, it made me feel like nothing’s ever going to happen because there will be no consensus. That’s what I have to say. And I really would hope something can be done about it. Last thing I’ll quickly say is that I said something, “Well, can’t we have some sort of radar or decibel level?” And he said, “Well, we don’t put signs up in Brattleboro.” And I just felt like, “Well, can’t we enforce... Are there laws, and can we not enforce them?” So I’ll say.
Thank you, Silver. We’ll look into that. Other people have spoken to me about that same problem in other neighborhoods. And we do have the benefit of having a town manager who lived on Main Street.
I’m familiar with that.
He’s familiar with the problem. Thank you for the comment. All right, who else? Mr. DeGray.
Richard DeGray, District 8. I never know how to dress when I come here. I don’t know if it’s going to be cold or hot. I’d like to thank a couple of people. I unretired myself from flowers, and I’m still doing the flowers. So I’m semi-retired doing the flowers as I have been up in West Brattleboro since the start of the flower program. Those flowers are not funded by DBA or the town, which a lot of people think that they are. And I want to make sure that the funders of those flowers get recognized. And one is the Trust Company of Vermont, who has been with me for 15 years. Brattleboro Savings and Loan, the same amount of time, and Mark Richards of the Richards Group. Brattleboro Savings and Loan, when they were under the leadership of Dan Yates, purchased the first water truck about 12 years ago, which allowed me to build the program up to what it was when I retired. And a special thanks to him. And also a special thanks to Rashad’s Garden Center. He’s been my partner from day one with the flowers, which have always been outstanding. Ahmed has been a true partner. I would be remiss if I did not thank my wife, who has also been a good partner and a real mule of a worker. And I say that, and she understands when I say she’s a hell of a worker. A special thanks to Public Works, who have been thanked quite a bit this evening, and Park and Recs Department. As some of you know, my health hasn’t been exactly stellar the last few years. And without those two organizations, I wouldn’t be able to continue to do what I do. And I really appreciate the effort that they do to help me do what I do for the town. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. I think we need an applause meter as well as a timer. Wendy, did you have something?
Thank you. Wendy Harrison, State Senator. And I serve on the Transportation Committee. And I just wanted to respond to the concern about noise. We actually did do some work this year on noise ordinances and a noise statute. So I’ll let the town manager know what we did, and you can stay in touch. And if the town has specific requests or requirements or suggestions, you can let us know. Thanks.
Susan?
Susan Bell, Brattleboro. My chronic and constant update with people is around the incidences that arise that involve the Police Department in the town of Brattleboro. For the current six-month period of 2025, the Police Department has responded to over 7,000 instances for this year so far. Last year, their total response was 13,000 instances in all of 2024. At the pace we’re at right now with this current six-month period, we’re going to outpace 2024 significantly. So that’s an ongoing problem. And for me directly, I live on Canal Street, and right across from my home is a convenience store gas station. Someone tried to set fire to that by putting ammunition and shotgun shells near propane tanks and setting them on fire. And that’s a pretty scary thing that happened in this town. So thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Yes, madam with the hat.
Guys? I’m Lisa Marie. I apologize for my cough. It’s not catchy. I want to say thank you for the flowers because they’re beautiful. And I also, before I start, I also want to actually thank the BRAT team. I think that’s what they’re called, the BRAT Resource Team. They are amazing. I wasn’t sure about them at first just because of what I do and everything. But they have been very helpful and very kind and respectful. So thank you, guys, for having them and the ones that you have. Thank you.
If there’s murmuring, I can’t hear, so...
Okay, sorry.
Not you.
It’s the audience. Can you please respect the speaker at the microphone? Thank you so much.
Okay, but anyways, again, I’m Lisa Marie, and I run 69A on Elliott Street, next to the Indo. We’ve been open for a little over two months now. Technically, we’ve been open longer than that. We had mutual aid twice a week for two hours apiece. And then we opened full-time two months ago. It is not just for homeless people. It is for anyone and everyone who needs help, assistance, or just wants to come in and chat or use the bathrooms because we have open public bathrooms. We give free coffee, free food. We do breakfast and lunch. Sometimes we do dinner. We are now going to be open seven days a week, which is going to be difficult, but we’re doing it. There is myself and my assistant, Dave, who is also our fabulous cook. The two of us are running it. And we have hit 100 people now that we service, and that is not counting repeats. So like, people come in and out, you know, throughout the day. We have hit 100 people that we are helping a day. And we need help because we need to pay rent. We need food. We need coffee cups. We need stuff to help keep us going. But we also need tents and sleeping bags and cots because there are so many people out there right now that have been kicked out of the hotels. There are some still in there, you know, the ones that get to use their 80 days. But the people we see, the children that come in, the elderly that come in, the people who cannot walk, cannot breathe, are coming in. My cough is from mold poisoning from a cot that I didn’t realize was covered in mold because my blankets were covering the mold. We’re sick. We’re dying. And we need help from the town. We need help from surrounding towns. There are so many of us out there. And people are cutting tents because they don’t want to say, “Hey, please don’t camp on my land. Please don’t camp here. Please don’t...” whatever. And they’re cutting tents. They’re cutting sleeping bags. These are hard items to come by. So please stop damaging the only thing that these people have because A, it’s hard to find, and B, it’s hard enough out here. The women are getting raped constantly and not just from homeless people, from housed people as well. They’re getting ripped out of their tents when they’re sleeping on a bench or on the sidewalk. They are getting assaulted and raped. They are getting... Like, everyone is getting robbed and not just from each other. And yes, I tell them to stop stealing from each other. But please, help us. Help us, help them, help me. I’m homeless, too, and I’m doing this. Most of the food, that is, we get some food donations, but most of it’s coming out of my pocket and our leaseholder’s pocket. And I’m not rich, I’m homeless. So if everyone could just... Even $5, you know, or a can of bug spray, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Lisa, great, thank you.
Thank you.
The woman next to Susan.
Well, no, I was just giving her her pen back. It had...
Oh, very good. Okay.
Could I just say something here in response?
Yes, but it’s a non-owed item, so we can’t have a discussion.
Okay. Yeah, just a point of information for folks who didn’t realize that 107 Brattleboro residents lost their rooms and motels on July 1. I was up at the O’Connor Lodge that day with a few people who came out to volunteer. And just want to acknowledge the organizations, the individuals who’ve really stretched themselves to show up and support as they are able. And I just want to echo the request for support. Sounds like folks can drop off goods at 69A Elliott Street. There’s also, in the past, Groundworks has accepted donations of tents and sleeping bags if people have camping supplies that they can spare, as well as financial donations. I had the chance to talk to an elderly gentleman who, on July 1, was being evicted. And he has, you know, being exited from the program. He has an oxygen tank that he uses, as well as an insulin pump. And he was telling me... His name is Larry. He spoke with the press, too, so I’m comfortable sharing the story. But he said he expected to die in the woods, that it was going to be very hard to continue surviving. So just, I think this is a really great opportunity for us to show up as a community and just really appreciate the people who’ve been putting themselves out there to support. Thanks.
Are there other members of the public who would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing done, I’ll ask John to give us a thumbnail sketch of the consent agenda items.
Yep. So on the consent agenda tonight, you have 11 items. If you approve this agenda, you’ll be approving the town’s certification of compliance to V-Trans for town road and bridge standards, and that we have an updated highway network inventory. You’ll be approving the town’s annual financial plan for town highways necessary to receive state aid. You’ll be awarding the 2025 Greenleaf Resurfacing Project in West Brattleboro to Basin Brothers Construction for a total cost of $122,176. You’ll be ratifying a parade permit for St. Michael’s Church’s Corpus Christi procession that took place Sunday, June 22. You’ll be approving the expenditure of $136,932 to replace Highway Division Vehicle 8, a tandem axle dump truck, and $117,600 for equipment installation and upfitting. You’ll be approving the purchase of Highway Division Vehicle Number 63, a tractor and mower assembly to mow the 30 miles of road shoulders we do every year from Tri-County Contractors and Supply at a cost of $151,167. You will be approving a $107,400 expenditure to purchase a John Deere excavator for the utility division. You’ll be approving an estimated $14,533 contract with L&amp;D Safety Marking Corporation to do pavement marking on town roads. You’ll be authorizing the filing of personal property tax liens on businesses who owe at least $1,000 in delinquent personal property taxes. You’ll be accepting a bid from Michelle Bylargen Construction Services... Hope I said that right. ...in the amount of $476,832.92 for the William Street Retaining Mall Reconstruction Project. And you’ll be approving a second-class liquor license, tobacco license, and tobacco substitute endorsement permit for Yazzy’s Market Incorporated, which will be operating at 328 Marlborough Road.
Thank you, John. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
A motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Great. Is there any discussion, or does anyone want to pull an item from the consent agenda? Okay. All Select Board members in favor of the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, that’s 5-0. Okay, on to regular business. The first item is the charter revision process. And let me invite Charter Revision Commission Chair Kate O’Connor and her colleagues to the table. Take it away, Kate.
Hello. Yes, I’m Kate O’Connor, and I’m Chair of the Charter Revision Commission. And with me is Joy Terno. And Joy is the clerk, so she can relate with you, Isaac. Hannah Clarice is also on the commission, and she’s sitting over there. We also have Peter Elwell, who’s a member of the commission, Maya Hasagawa, and Denise Glover are also members of the commission. So there are six of us. We did provide you with a memo, so I won’t go through the whole thing. But I thought I would just give the Reader’s Digest version of what we’ve been doing and where we’re going and what help we’re going to be needing from the Select Board moving forward. And then, obviously, we’ll answer any questions that anybody has. We were appointed by, I guess it was two Select Boards ago. It was in December of 2022. And we are appointed per a provision in the charter, which says that at least every 15 years, the Select Board has to appoint a Charter Revision Commission in order to look at the charter and make any changes or recommend changes that we see that might need to happen. So we were appointed in December of 2022, and we have been meeting regularly since. We have gone through the entire charter. There are nine articles and four addendums. And we have been systematically going through each part of the charter by article and then by subject. All of our meetings have been public. You can watch them on BCTV. If you’ve missed them, we have a page on the town website. And this is not the first set of charter changes. There have been several before us. But what we’ve done is really looked at... The charter that we have now is pretty much based on what was done in 1984. There were subsequent changes, but not sort of far-reaching. So that’s really what we’ve been looking at. We are six people, but our role is to make recommendations to the town. So ultimately, it will be the town citizens or the town voters who approve this charter. And then it has to be approved by the legislature and then signed by the governor. So tonight, we’re not asking you for anything, but we will be coming back in September, the beginning of September. Our hope is we’re going to work really hard in July and August. And our hope is to have the entire set of recommendations that we’re making to come to you folks to go to a town-wide vote in November. And I know there are some people in the room or on Zoom that have been watching us. And our recommendations to date, we don’t have them all done, so I don’t want to go through everything. We’ll come back in September with that. Some of them are small. They’re just changing, making things gender neutral, taking out the references to the school board because the school board has absolutely nothing to do now with the town since school consolidation. The one change that we’re going to recommend that has received the most attention is moving away from representative town meeting away from representative town meeting to an open-town meeting form of government. So we've been working hard, we feel really sort of comfortable and confident in what we've been doing and how we've been doing our process. We know that it is not the six of us that are making these decisions, that we're here to make recommendations to the community. And your role, and we have the town attorney here too, who can explain more if you have any questions about what your role is, but we will come back to you, as I said, in the beginning of September, and ask you to adopt our changes and put them on for a townwide vote on November 4th. And that's going to require two different questions on the same ballot, per state statute, in order to be, move away from representative town meeting. The town has to vote to stop representative town meeting, so that would be one question. And then the second question would be to adopt the charter changes as recommended. So that's the process moving forward. And, you know, I don't know what you folks have questions for us or want to know, I'm, we're, Joy and I and Hannah are here to answer any questions you may have.
I think the public needs, thank you, Kate, I think the public needs to understand what would happen with the two proposed ballot options that you have, if they're voted up or if they're voted down, what happens after each.
Would Hannah like to?
I noticed you didn't include our flow chart, which is very helpful, but it's available on the Charter Commission website. So as Kate mentioned, there is a statute under which towns have to vote.
Hannah, do me a favor, state your name.
Hannah Clarice. There is a statute under which towns have to vote to approve a representative form of town meeting, and under that same statute, you have to vote to discontinue the representative form of town meeting. So that is not something that gets ratified by the legislature or the governor, that's just something that's made on the town level. And then the charter changes do have to go through that process of getting approved. So in the event that the town were to vote to discontinue representative town meeting, but not to approve the charter changes, as Kate mentioned, there are provisions in the charter that are currently moot, like the school board, because there is no town-level school board, so it would effectively moot all of the provisions regarding representative town meeting, and we would go to the default under state statute, which is an open-town meeting.
Thank you.
And if the charter changes were approved, there's obviously a delay in that process, and so there is a chance under this proposal that in 2026, we might have approved the charter changes, but they haven't been ratified by the legislature or the governor, in which case the same thing would apply, we would default to an open-town meeting for that year.
Thank you. Are there select board members with questions? Isaac?
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you so much for this very thoughtful, multi-year process that you've been engaged with and for sticking with it, for your thoroughness and soliciting public input. I'm, I would like to learn more about our role as the select board in this process, and if you're looking for our input on any of these proposals. And also, so these are three questions, I'll just put them all out and repeat them if it'd be helpful. I would like to understand, what if the voters, if we move forward with these two proposals going onto the ballot in November, and voters voted down the change to an open-town meeting, away from representative meeting, and then they approved the charter changes, wouldn't that be a conflict, like, wouldn't those kind of cancel each other out and nullify each other?
In answer to that, the, the job of the select board, number one, as Hannah pointed out, will be to warn the meeting on whether or not to rescind the representative town meeting form of, form of government, okay? So only, if that is voted down, meaning you're going to retain representative town meeting, you don't even get to the second article. You would just keep going with representative town meeting, and then the Charter Review Commission would come up with other changes, many of which are in there anyway, but that process would continue, but you would continue with representative town meeting. Only if the vote on the first article to rescind representative town meeting, do you then get to the second article with regard to the proposal that the Charter Review Commission is bringing forward. If that passes, as Hannah pointed out, that's got to be ratified by the legislature and signed by the governor, so your 2026 annual town meeting would be an open-town meeting without those changes. If it got defeat, if Article 2, the recommended charter review changes got defeated, then your default for 2026 annual meeting would be simply an open-town meeting form of government. That answer?
I think so. So if the voters voted against the first article, meaning they voted down moving to open-town meeting, and they changes, which might not make sense, but maybe people are saying, well, there are other changes in this that they like, those changes would not move forward, it would not be sent to Montpelier.
So I think we haven't clarified that the second article will be framed, in the event that the vote on the first article is in the affirmative, shall we adopt these changes?
Ah, okay, thank you.
Are there members of the Select Board who would like to comment?
I did have that question about whether you wanted our input.
We, we want your input and everybody's input.
But the Select Board does have a role, and that is to approve and place on the ballot. So yes, we have a role.
Yep, and we'll, we'll take your input formally, informally, but we, and we, we have actually made some changes to the Select Board part of the charter based on comments we got from previous Select Board members. So we're happy to take your comments, but as Liz said, we are going to be coming back to you and asking you to accept our changes and put our recommended charter, recommend, our recommended charter changes on the ballot. So you all, you all, you have, like, ultimate input.
Did you have a comment, Oscar?
I did, and I'm just going to make it quickly, even though maybe it's foolish, but just to say that the reason we're here today is just to receive this update on process, and I feel like I'm seeing a gleam or two in the eye in the audience, and I'd just like to suggest that this might not be the time for a, you know, rock and roll discussion of the three different types of town meeting or Australian ballot, et cetera, that have been coming up for the Charter Review Commission, because we're not making any decision on that tonight, but that's just my opinion.
However, Oscar, I think people have questions as they concern the process.
Certainly.
And we should hear them, and I see Randy's hand up.
Hi, Randy Blodgett, District 7, RTM member. I'd just like to say, we've been part of the process, a large group of us, we've testified in public, we've written emails, you know, we've done, answered the survey, we've done everything, and we feel we haven't been heard, so we're going forth with a petition. One person, one vote, we have around 300 signatures already, and two articles, the same like they described, except the second one will be Australian ballot, so that every person has a vote. All-town business will be voted on by every citizen that wishes to vote, and we hope to have the 400 and something that we need soon. People are out tonight, I have petitions with me, and we just feel this is the best direction for Brattleboro, that the more people that have a say, the better governance we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Yes, Oscar?
I just have a question. So regarding process, if there's a petition to put something on the ballot, it goes on the ballot, I'm looking at Bob, but if there's a successful citizen petition to put something on the ballot, it gets put on the ballot with no alterations, that just happens.
Correct. The, if, if there is a petition, there's pursuant to the statute, then the Select Board's job is to essentially hold hearings and place that on the ballot. The one difference is that the obligation of the Select Board is to place that on the ballot for the next annual meeting, next primary election, or next general election. And so there is no primary this year, and there is no general election this year, so it would be the March annual meeting, unless the board decides to put that on for the, for what is contemplated by the Charter Review Committee here for a November special vote, town meeting vote. That is a procedural, but also substantive question for the Select Board to decide, we don't need to decide that tonight. And that's a larger question on whether, what would really be three options, one, whether to retain representative town meeting or not. If the answer is in the affirmative, then you'd get to either B or C, which would be the Charter Revision Committee's, Commission's recommendations, or if you decided to put that on, what would be really an Australian ballot or one-person-one-vote alternative. The, what I raise more tonight as just a question is the confusion factor of that. But if there's a petition, your job will be to put that on and warn that for a meeting, but the, the question will be whether you do that for November or for March.
And it's also
Point board question?
Just let me finish my question, Dick. It's also possible for the Select Board to edit the Charter Commission's language to be consistent with the petition?
Um, that's a discussion that you would have to have with the Charter Review Commission, because the Charter Review Commission is its own independent pathway under the existing charter for changing the charter, but that is possible, but you're not going to be able to change the petition language if it comes in by petition, that's got to stay.
The petition language can't change, but the Charter Commission language could be edited?
See, it, it, it depends on whether the Select Board would, on its own, adopt a different charter amendment than what is the Charter Review Commission is recommending.
Mm-hmm.
So I think legally, the answer is yes, it's possible.
Thank you. Mr. DeGrae?
What is the standard for having this be a binding vote? I always thought that, and Claire, obviously you're going to clarify this for me, that the standard is higher for something that is binding, to make a change, than just getting something on the ballot. I didn't think that just because you got something on the ballot, it was, it was binding and arbitrary. I don't know where I got that, I always believed that, and I thought that if it was going to be binding, that the standard for the signatures was much higher. So could you clarify that for me?
Under the statute, the threshold is 5% for a charter petition change. That's under Title 172645, is the 5%.
5% registered voters?
Yes.
Can I?
Kate, did you want to?
Yeah, I just, I just want to speak on behalf of the Charter Commission, and being somebody who expresses their opinion all the time, I actually appreciate when, you know, people want us to make their opinions known. But I do want to say that we have been working for like two and a half years on this, and we have been taking public comment in all forms on the form of annual town meeting since the very beginning, and we have been really thoughtful about it, we actually have been listening to what people are saying, and we've all had our own evolutions of, you know, where we've come to on this, but I think, and I can speak for myself, and based on the conversations we've had at the charter meetings, we all feel really comfortable that recommending open-town meeting is what we're hearing people want. And we wouldn't recommend something if we didn't think that it was what we were hearing. And I think I wrote in my memo that, you know, we have conversations about one section of the charter, but it also impacts another section of the charter. So what's been really interesting for me is, we may be talking about X issue, but the comments we get about X issue also have something to do with issue Y, which is sometimes these conversations about how much participation and in what forms people want participation in town government to take. So I have no hesitation on saying that, from what we have been hearing for the multiple years now that we have been doing this, is that what we are hearing from the public, the recommendations we are making, I feel very confident, is what we've been hearing. Obviously, if there's a vote and it's something different, then that's the case, but I think as a Charter Revision Commission, speaking as one member, we're going to come forward with the open-town meeting recommendation. And I just do want to stress, and Bob and Hannah can tell me that I'm wrong, but even the petition that goes forward, if it's successful and gets voted on, it has to go to the legislature and it has to go to the governor, just like anything else. So we may be going to the legislature with, with two different recommendations for charter changes, which, you know, is not probably unheard of in the state of Vermont, that you have two different things going up to the Vermont Legislature on the same subject. So we'll see.
Thank you, Kate. Bob, Hannah, do you want to opine on that?
Oh, I can, I just want to build off of something that Kate said, which is that a lot of these changes work together, and my hope would be that the Select Board will not try to make too many edits, because we've really thought about how everything works in harmony, and we're, we're trying to put forth something that will be a functional, foundational document for the town, and if you start picking apart individual pieces, it gets really messy. But I'll let Bob speak to the legal question.
I think a lot of it boils down to the first question, which is whether to retain representative town meeting or not, because that's going to be, depending on how that vote goes, you're either going in one direction or possibly two different directions. If the vote is in the affirmative to, to go away from RTM, then you have the Charter Revision Commission's recommendations of open-town meeting that could be voted upon, and if there's a petition that comes in, then we're going to have to warn eventually a vote on the petition language. So a lot remains to be seen, but the first question really is, do you retain representative town meeting? And once you get, once you get that decision, other things will probably fall into place.
Thank you. Are there comments from the audience? Ronnie?
I just have a question. Hi, Ronnie Byrne, District 9, just a quick question. I understand the, the process that there will be two articles, first one to, do we keep RTM, yes or no? Assuming the answer to the first one is yes, based on what I've been hearing, the CRC recommendation would be to go to open-town meeting, and we would vote either yes or no on that, is that correct?
What's going to happen is, if the, if it's yes, we want to get, we don't want representative town meeting anymore, our charter recommendations, you're going to vote on the whole host of charter recommendations together.
Understood, understood, but I'm just focusing on the form of government at this point.
We are, we are going to be recommending an open form of town government.
So, so that being the case, if I vote yes, I, if, I would be voting for the open form of town government, but if we all vote no, we're still going to get open form of town government, is that correct?
No, if you vote, and Bob can correct me, if you vote no
That's the default.
If you, well, if you vote no, we do not want to get rid of representative town meeting, you get representative.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about, we've said, we're getting rid of RTM, we're on Article 2.
Yeah.
Oh, you guys are recommending open, and if everybody, we can either get there by voting yes, or we can get there by voting no, that's what it sounds like to me.
Right.
Right. I think I have your question in, in mind. If the answer to question one is yes, we get rid of representative town meeting, then you vote on Article 2, which is the Charter Revision Committee's recommendations that the Select Board will have adopted as its own recommendations moving forward, so it goes to an Australian ballot. If the answer to that is no, okay, you, you vote those down, you're correct that the default, at least for 2026, will be an open-town meeting, because you voted to rescind representative town meeting, so you've got open-town meeting. What remains to be seen then is if there's a petition, depending on when that is set for a vote, if the Select Board decided to put that on for annual town meeting, you'd be voting on whether to do Australian ballot.
Right.
But your, your vote on that would be at your annual town meeting, you wouldn't be operating your town meeting in 2026, because you hadn't voted on that yet.
Thank you.
That would be Election Day in March, not
Correct.
The date of the open-town meeting?
Right.
Okay, yes.
Hi, Alyssa Roy, District 9, ask her, I know you didn't really want to get into it, but I do want to voice my concern. There is this discussion about pivoting away from RTM, and my concern is that if we make that pivot, we aren't making voting accessible to people who can't be there physically. That's my concern, we're talking about disabled persons, people who may work on that day, elderly people who don't have the mobility that we do, so essentially, you're cutting them out of the vote, and that was the, that defeats the whole purpose of pivoting away from representative town meeting. That's, that's my concern.
Thank you. Randy?
Hi, Randy Blodgett, District Seven. I just wanted to say, our purpose for doing this now, we've been thinking about it, and we were waiting to see what direction the committee was going. And we thought, by starting now, and at the rate we're going, hopefully in a week or a week and a half, we're going to have what we need. But we're going to continue gathering as many as we can, because that way we reach people. But we wanted to give everyone involved time to see what the people of Brattleboro wanted. And that's the reason that we started now versus waiting and waiting where it was too late to do something. So we hope to have it in, we hope to have that petition done, and then it'll be acted upon, and that way everybody involved knows, here's where we're at. And that's why we did it now.
Thank you. John?
John Kennedy, District Seven. My question, I guess through the chair.
You ask me, and I'll ask you.
Okay. So assuming the petitions are turned in September 1st, is, first two questions. Is there a time that is triggered for the election for that petition? The second question is, is there a statutory reason that the Select Board cannot put that special petition on the same election that they're proposing for this committee recommendation, Charter Committee recommendation?
Okay, let's ask Bob those two questions.
So, on your first question, there's no, there's no requirement to have a vote within a set number of days or anything like that. They have to put it on the next annual meeting.
Okay, so.
Or general election or primary.
So, no, is the answer.
Correct.
Okay, and the second part is, is there a prohibition from you, from the Select Board placing that on the November ballot?
Well, I mean, it's, it's not a annual meeting or a primary or anything like that, but they could warn it as a special town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Silver?
Yeah. Just a quick question. Just a quick question is, how do we, newbies like myself, access that information about what exactly an open, the public meetings are, so I can learn more about that?
Sure, if you have access to the internet, if you go on, if you don't, like wave your hand to me, but go on brattleboro.gov, which is the town website, and the Charter Revision Commission has its own page, and we have a whole host of documents that include our minutes, our agendas, our meeting materials. It has detailed explanation of what an open town meeting is versus a Representative Town Meeting. It also has all of the backup material that we used to come to the decisions that we've made, which is probably more than anybody wants to look at, but we do have a lot of information. And we also have an email address, is charter@brattleboro.gov, and that's on the page, too. So if you look at that and you have any questions, you can email us. We are meeting on Wednesday. Next, is it tomorrow? No, next Wednesday. Next Wednesday at 6:15 in this room.
Next Thursday?
No, is it?
I think it's next Thursday.
I don't know when it is.
I think it's next Thursday.
We're all confused, I'm confused. So it's next Thursday at 6:15 here. But our, but our, the town website under Charter has all that information.
And if people do not have access to the internet, the library has that information? Mm-hmm. Yes, Susan.
Susan Bell, Bell, Brattleboro, District Eight, Representative Town Meeting Member. So I'm feeling like, based on what we've been hearing, if the, if there's an overwhelming support for Australian ballot by the registered voters in the town of Brattleboro, there seems to be a setup for failure here around the will of the people in the town of Brattleboro. Because we're hearing that we can't possibly get it done for the 2026 vote, because we can't get the legislature and the governor to act quickly enough to get it passed, so that we can take advantage of the will of the people of the town of Brattleboro for 2026. I think that, I'm an optimist on that. I really think that if we requested the legislators to take action, and the governor to take action immediately when they convene in January, that there is a possibility we could get those changes effective for 2026. And I'm sad to think that there's an option for not even having that petition acknowledged for a vote prior to March of 2026. I feel, I feel, because most of you have seen me coming to meetings having mobility issues, I'm recognizing the fact that I can't sit at RTM for 10, 12 hours, or even an open town meeting for 10 or 12 hours. And I'm not the only one who feels disenfranchised through that process of open town meeting or RTM. I make the effort because I think it's important, and it's my right to have my voice heard, as well as try to bring voices of other people who can't or won't, or just are unable to attend an open public meeting or an RTM. Sorry to go on about this, but I really feel that this process, what I'm hearing now, I am frustrated beyond belief. And I would like everyone to take a step back and make sure that everyone in this community is fully given the opportunity to engage in the public, the right, their right to have a say in how the town of Brattleboro is managed, run, and financed. Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from Timothy Belknap. Thank you, Susan.
Madam Chair, thank you for taking my time here. I would just like to put forward that it's any sort of town meeting, whether it's RTM or open, quote unquote, open town meeting, is just automatically excluding the most vulnerable of our population, okay? Those individuals who can't possibly take off a day from work because they're single parents and need to get the food on the table, individuals working shifts, for instance, won't be able to make it. We have a neighbor that has a lack of mobility, and she won't be able to make it there. Anyone taking the local transportation may not be able to make it there. Anyone who can't drive at night will automatically be excluded. And then if we talk about stamina, yeah, meeting that last 10, 12, 14 hours takes a lot of stamina. So between those three alone, we're excluding a large portion of the community. Individuals who deserve to be heard, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Timothy.
Can I comment?
Let's hear from Jackie first, and then Kate.
Jackie Reese, also an RTM member for District Nine. So from what I'm understanding, you can change the wording from the committee to anything that you want? Can it be changed from open town meeting to Australian ballot?
I don't see why not. Let's ask Bob.
You know how I prefaced this, of you get into that confusion factor? Well, this is what I was talking about. But this will be a discussion for the board. But under the current charter, you've got four ways to amend the charter. One is by petition, that Mr. Blodgett is talking about. Two is by the Select Board. If the Select Board does it on its own motion, they could do that completely separate from the Charter Review Commission, okay? So the Select Board next week could come up with its own changes and put that right to the vote. Once it's adopted by the Select Board, then it would go right to the voters by Australian ballot. The third, which is really not so much talked about, is by resolution of Representative Town Meeting, but set that one aside for now. And then the fourth is by the Charter Revision Commission, which, what the Charter Revision, and that has its own process to it. What the Charter Revision Commission is seeking this, for the Select Board to do, is to take its recommendation and put it right to Australian ballot. And that, because otherwise, that Charter Revision Commission provision of amending the charter goes to Representative Town Meeting. So you've got a little bit of the chicken or the egg. If you're going to have a vote on whether to rescind Representative Town Meeting, then if that were the only vote, and the Charter Revision Commission did not agree with the Select Board, it could continue with its recommendations, but that would then need to go through the hearing process and then have a special town meeting instead of a special Representative Town Meeting. It could go two different paths. So this is, I think what we'll have to do for the next time we talk about this is Hannah and I can put together a flow chart with the if this, then that. But we did that when we had two proposals, and now we potentially have a third.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is that the only way it can go to Australian ballot, I guess I should be talking to Elizabeth. The only way for it to go to Australian ballot is if you take the Charter Review recommendations and put it in as-is? You can't make changes and then put it into the Australian ballot?
The Select Board can make its own, if it took the Charter Revision Commission's recommendations and decided to change, if the Select Board said to the Charter Revision Commission, "We don't like your recommendations, but we want this to be voted upon by Australian ballot," the Select Board would need to make its own charter amendment and put it to Australian ballot. Now, the Charter Review Commission.
But can it make just the one, just the one amendment?
The Select Board can make whatever proposed changes to the charter they want. It doesn't have to come from the Charter Commission.
Right.
Okay, but that's not my, my question. My question is, can they take the recommendations, make the change from open meeting to Australian ballot, and then put that to Australian ballot?
Yes.
Is that a yes or no? Yeah?
They don't want it.
I, I, I hear you. I hear you. But is that, is that a possibility?
The Select Board could do that.
Okay.
The Charter Review Commission might withdraw its request, but even if the Charter Review Commission withdrew its request, the Select Board can do it on its own anyway.
And still do it.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. All right.
That's why I said the first question is whether to rescind RTM form of government. Everything's going to flow from there.
Okay. Thank you.
First Pride, District Nine Rep. I'd like to put a little perspective on this. There are close to 50 people in each district who, any citizen, whether registered to vote or not, has access to if they have any concerns about how things might be decided at RTM. So I think the idea that we don't have access is a little far-fetched. I would also like to point out that the Charter Review Commission is a appointed body, not an elected body, set to make recommendations, not decisions. I personally would love to weigh in on any number of subjects in many different governmental venues, whether it's appointed bodies or elected bodies. I would love to, you know, if I had time and energy, be at the State House full-time. There are many levels of things that, you know, I might or might not be qualified, that I might have opinions about. The beauty of RTM, and I think the thing that we need to consider very closely, is whether whatever else we're doing is actually better, or just a knee-jerk reaction to a change. And so that's the thing I'm most worried about. And I think we really need to, before we make some radical change to our government, actually appreciate what we actually have, and the deliberative nature of a group of people who are elected and take responsibility for doing this year after year, rather than showing up, worse yet, at a ballot box with no real background or information. So I'm hoping to have that discussion with many of my constituents in the coming times, and I hope that the Charter Review Commission won't tip the scales too heavily in the meantime.
No.
Nell Mayo, District Eight. I always hate seeing myself in the corner there. I think that all of us are prone to use arguments of representing other people when it sways in our favor, and so I think if we're talking about even who showed up at the ballot box last year, someone, please correct me, but I think it was around 1,200 people, so we're working at like a 10th of the population of Brattleboro. And I understand that the registered voter population could be smaller than that. I don't think that any of us can fully claim that we're representing the people, right? Like even a petition of 450 people is not a majority of the town. It's not, it might be, it's more than Representative Town Meeting, and I agree that I think a lot of people are not well-educated such that they know to approach their representatives. And also, there's not that much accountability if someone votes the way you don't want them to, and they're in your district. But I just think we should be careful of language, because it's easy to plan to all show up at a meeting and have, you know, 10 people say the same thing. That doesn't inherently represent what we have working in our town. And I wouldn't stand up to say this, except that it's a record, and so now it's on the record. And I do think that it would be a disservice to the work that the Commission has been doing to exercise power to change the recommendation from open town meeting to Australian ballot. I'm not even saying that to come out against Australian ballot. I have a personal preference towards open town meeting, because I enjoy the discussion that happens there. And I also think that if we want to accurately gauge what are limiting factors for people with more vulnerabilities, we have to see if coming to the ballot box instead of coming to town meeting, if they would be able to reach that goalpost, if that makes sense. Like, you can't come to a meeting, but would you come to the ballot? And if you wouldn't come to either, then where do we go from there? So that's all, and thank you, everyone, for your work.
Thank you.
And that's included to the citizens organizing on their own.
Thank you. Dick, did you still have a comment? And I think you're the last one. Oh, Kate, I'm sorry.
Dick DeGrae, District Eight. I became a town meeting member early in the 90s, and when I first walked into that meeting, the first thing I said, the people in Brattleboro aren't being represented. And that's when I knew very few people in the community. I'm lucky I got elected, because probably nobody knew who I was. I want to thank the Charter Commission for all the work that they've done for two and a half years. And then when I hear people say, "We've got to make sure our voice is heard," you've had an opportunity to do that. Sitting up there for eight years, there were many projects that came before us that were rounding third and heading for home, and the big group of people would come and go, "I'm going to voice my disapproval to this," when we had a long process where people could have come, they wait until there's two outs, bottom of the ninth inning, and it's a 0-2 count on the batter. I don't know if we're going to have open town meeting, or now with this petition going, Australian ballot. I do know this, that town meeting isn't working. When someone says you can talk to a representative, well, if you get, if I talk to you people, and there's only five of you, and I do talk to you, and you have a lot of people talking to you, you're either going to make me happy or make me sad. And just think about all the representatives that we have, and you try to talk to them or try to vote for them. I know a lot of people in town, and when I looked at the ballot this year, I'm going, "Who the hell do I vote for? I'm not going to vote for somebody I don't know." And so I don't want to, I'm not going to criticize the Charter Committee for all the work that they've done, the changes that they've made, they should be applauded. They should be applauded. And if you haven't gone to a Charter Committee meeting or tried to phone them or sent them an email, a text, whatever means of communication, shame on you. Shame on you. And town meeting isn't working and hasn't worked for a long, long time. And if it goes to Australian ballot, that's great. And if it goes to open town meeting, that's great. Then you have to get there. When somebody talks about people that work on Saturdays, well, that's the same problem that they have right now. They can't become a town meeting member if they work on Saturday or if they have a disability. There are ways to work some of those things out. I mean, it's the same thing when we have special town meetings in all these towns on March, the first Tuesday in March. So we need to be careful here about criticizing the Charter Review Committee. And I appreciate citizen petition if that's what this is all about, open government. But access to these people here has been available to them for two and a half years. And I applaud them and regardless of how things come out. And so I thank you. And I do know one thing, that we do need to change the form of government that we have. And whatever that is, it's got to beat what's going on right now. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me.
Kate's been waiting, so please, Kate.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, tonight we're hearing a lot of people who are wanting Australian ballot. At our meetings, we've heard from a lot of people who want Representative Town Meeting to stay. We've heard from a lot of people that want open town meeting. So we've heard every which way that you can imagine. Keep Representative, no, everyone agrees on one thing. Representative Town Meeting isn't working. But we've heard from people who say, "It's not working, but we should fix it." We've heard from people that say, "It's not working, we shouldn't fix it and we should go open town meeting." And of course, we've heard Australian ballot. But the one common theme through those whole thing is people want an opportunity to talk to each other. And they want an opportunity to make changes, if they want to make changes to something. So, and I don't want to get, we could talk for hours on this because we've been talking about it for years. But I just want, you know, to say that we've heard it all. We've heard it all and we put it through the sifter and the mixer and we've come out with the recommendation that we're making. And I do want to say, Hannah said something about this in the beginning, is that, and I want to focus everybody, that the Charter changes are more than just the form of government. I know it's the one that everybody gets, you know, is really focused on. But what we've done here, you know, if anyone hasn't read the Charter, you should read it because it's outlines how our town government functions. The powers of the people, the powers of the Select Board, the town manager, duties and responsibilities of the town manager, and other things in there. And what we've tried to do as a group, along with all the public participation, we've gotten on every subject, and we've actually gotten a lot of good ideas from the public, is to, you know, put a document together that makes us function as a town government in a way that's, you know, people-oriented. So, and I think we've done that. I feel like we're still working on it. What we're doing now and if people want to come, we haven't set the agenda yet, but at the next meeting, we're going to be talking about the Select Board some more. And we're going to, we're continuing to talk about, if we go to open town meeting, what that means for all these other things that are in the Charter. But we are listening, we have listened, and we can tell you every which way that people think about how we should function our town government. And that's how we've come up with open town meeting. But again, you know, it's going to go to a vote and we see what happens.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you very much. Erin. And you're the last.
Erin Smith, District Seven. So Kate, I want to thank you and the rest of the Charter Change Commission. You have a difficult job and I'm sure it's trying. But I would have to say that, how can you argue with one person, one vote if we're looking at trying to get the entire community's voice out there? Everybody agrees that Representative Town Meeting hasn't been working. We also know that if we have an open town meeting that's on a particular day, people with mobility issues and that kind of things can't have their say. But with an Australian ballot, that can be mailed and everybody can have participation. And isn't it supposed to be about the whole community? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So that's been discussed. And I just want to thank you, Kate, and Joy, and the entire Commission, and Hannah and Bob. It's been, I've been to your meetings. I see, I see how the sausage is or isn't made and I thank you.
Thank you. And just, I want to remind everybody, go to the Charter Revision page on the town website and we have a whole host of meetings coming up. We're going to meet every Thursday in August. Every, yeah, every Thursday in August. So you can join us here at 6:15 and we're going to meet next week here at 6:15. So thank you and thank you. We'll be back in the beginning of September.
We look forward to it.
All right. Next. The Hinsdale Bridge update. John, you want to give us an intro and do we have guests from Hinsdale that?
I don't know if we do. Oh, yes, we do. We have Town Administrator Lynch and Police Chief Evans.
Would you two ladies like to join us at the table? And John, you'll introduce and they'll present and then we'll have an open discussion.
Yep. So the, earlier this year, the board met in a joint meeting with the Hinsdale Select Board. And you learned about a project that the New Hampshire Department of Transportation is proposing to do on the two bridges, the two old bridges across the Connecticut, the Anna Hunt Marsh and the Charles Dana Bridge. There really, it was kind of decided there at that meeting that both boards needed to go back and talk and think about what the next step would be. The Brattleboro Select Board discussed this at two other occasions following that joint meeting. And at the second conversation that you had about it, you proposed drafting a joint letter from the two Select Boards to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. We sent a draft letter that had all of the elements that this board discussed to the Hinsdale Select Board and we requested whether they would want to sign on to that joint letter to give feedback to New Hampshire DOT. We've since heard back from the town of Hinsdale and maybe Administrator Lynch would want to address this. But we heard back from Hinsdale that they're not interested in signing on to the joint letter that we had proposed. But they offered two other suggestions. One was they asked for either support in petitioning New Hampshire DOT and NEPA to take the bridges down or that Brattleboro somehow acquire and manage the bridges and the property. So that's kind of, that's kind of where it's come back now to this board. And I need to know what your, what your pleasure is in terms of communicating back to New Hampshire DOT and Hinsdale. And that's sort of where we're at.
Great. Well, let's start by asking our guests, you know, we attended a meeting in Hinsdale and you were all very gracious to us. And I just want to give each of you an opportunity to say something about Hinsdale's decision-making.
I'm going to let my chief go first.
Okay.
May I also just make a point? It wasn't us. It was the previous Select Board.
Well, some of that is us, but yes.
But that's correct. We are now three new members who you may or may not know. So if you want us to introduce ourselves, we're happy to do that because you met our other board.
And actually, Amanda, you and I did attend a meeting in Hinsdale regarding the bridge.
Yes, we did, but our whole board did not.
That's correct.
Unlike the previous board.
Yes. That still doesn't change my request to these kind people from Hinsdale.
You can introduce yourselves.
You want to talk about your decision-making and so that we can then respond and talk about our thoughts, each of our thoughts, because I'm sure they vary.
Okay.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. I would like to address the members of the Brattleboro Select Board on behalf of the Hinsdale Police Department. There have been ongoing concerns regarding the recent closure of the bridges connecting our two communities. I would like to remind everyone that only 7% of the bridge is actually in the state of Vermont. As you are aware, the new bridge was opened December 2024, but there was no corresponding immediate plan for the future of the old bridges, which were initially slated for repair based on a grant. I would just like to know of the grant with the repairs, if they had have occurred or if they do occur. There is no plan from the state to maintain those bridges after the fact. So if the repairs take place, maybe they'll be nice for 10, 20 years, but someone's going to have to take responsibility of continuing with the repairs and upkeep of the bridges, which I think part of the reason why Hinsdale didn't want to take ownership is we don't want, or the board didn't want that liability. So I'll continue. Unfortunately, they will be left dormant for an extended period, a situation that is expected to persist for at least two years while decisions regarding their future are being made. These structures have been temporarily closed, leaving the two bridges open to pedestrians without a feasible plan that can be supported by the town of Hinsdale and its taxpayers has compounded several issues. The closure of the bridges combined with the lack of a clear plan for their future has led to increased problems in the area. Since the closure, the Hinsdale Police Department has been actively patrolling the region to prevent the area from becoming a hotspot for illegal activities, including drug use, unauthorized camping, and accumulation of litter. These issues have escalated due to the elimination of vehicular traffic on the bridges and the adjacent areas, which have unfortunately attracted individuals who are seeking to use the space in ways that endanger both public safety and the environment. We have had numerous arrests since the closure of the bridges to vehicular traffic, which include camping restricted incidents that led to finding drugs, drug paraphernalia, crack cocaine, and fentanyl. In addition to the arrests made, we found that there was continuous damage to the signs placed on the sidewalks, which were closed to pedestrians due to them being deemed unsafe. This risk alone was the deciding factor to push to having the bridges closed to pedestrian traffic. The level of trash on the island, to include under the bridges and areas in the river, is not acceptable. While there is a group that has cleaned the area up on two separate occasions, this does not negate the fact that the criminal activity between the bridges and cleaning the trash up behind folks who are in need of accountability and harsh, a harsh bout of detoxin does not accomplish anything. While the island itself would be a potential spot, a good potential spot for recreation, the reality is that the tax burden is going to fall on the town of Hinsdale, whether it is to repurpose the land and the bridges or if it's left to sit dormant. The level of policing that it would take to prevent this island from becoming an extension of Brattleboro's ever-growing publicly displayed drug scene would add to the minimum of two or more officers to our budget. Without the revenue to support this, I highly doubt the town of Brattleboro will get the support of Hinsdale in regards to leaving the bridges up. Even if Brattleboro were to buy the bridges from Hinsdale, the bridges would still be considered New Hampshire. Property and policing would still be a responsibility for the town of Hinsdale. This would be an exuberant cost to one or both towns' taxpayers. I have to add that there has been a lot of misinformation being put out in the public regarding the safety of the bridges. I can attest that leaving them up puts increased liability on the state and New Hampshire.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also have a letter and I have copies for all of you as well. I end up skipping over things and I included pictures and stuff like that. It says, "Dear Select Board, as you may know, I was on the existing bridge committee and a well-drawn plan for the area was created. I was very upset at the bridge opening to learn that the renovations would not occur on the bridge-island area for two years. I knew right then and there that if the island was left dormant, only protected by removable bollards, the town of Hinsdale was at risk for reaping all of the negative behavior on the island and the bridges. Sadly, since the time the bridge opening, this is exactly what has occurred. The Hinsdale Police Department has been vigilant with daily walkthroughs of the island, which most of the time, they have encountered issues. The construction company keeping an eye on the tents under the bridges while they were on site. There has been a lot of negative activity in the area, including vicious dog fights, drug use. The Hinsdale Police Department has had multiple arrests and incidents between on or under the bridges since the closure in December, with an obvious uptick since it has warmed up. Most recent example is from June 18th, 2025, when a male individual was located under the bridge to Brattleboro but in Hinsdale. He was asked to step out from under the bridge, a request that always, we always hope they comply with. With having to deal with someone under a bridge above the water is extremely dangerous for all involved. Upon stepping out from under the bridge, he refused to state his name, even though he has a legal obligation to do so. And they were investigating a crime. And as you may know, it is illegal, it is not legal to camp on state property and anyone's property without permission of the owner. This man, he had, said he had permission from the Brattleboro Police Department to live under the bridge. We know that not to be true. Once he understood that he was not free to leave, he tried to run and attempted to use the wooden sidewalk, which is closed to all pedestrians as it is falling apart and dangerous. Luckily, he was not so graceful and fell within the officer's reach. The male was identified and as per norm as of late, was found to have an electric bench warrant and was arrested. This individual also had paraphernalia associated with what is typical with the use of crack cocaine, heroin, fentanyl. He also threw a zipped pouch in the river to avoid having it searched. The other common denominator is that each person who has been, who has caused an issue on the island and has been arrested, has a mailing address of 54 South Main Street, Brattleboro, Vermont, or is associated with one of the hotel voucher programs, which is due to end July 1st, 2025. We would like to be clear that we are not naming this as a homeless issue, but an issue that, with enabling folks that need to be detoxing and accountability. This is an issue of crime. We refuse to put a label on it of being a homeless issue. The Hinsdale Police Department is not staffed enough to keep up with the policing of the island. We will not stand by and have it become what the parking garage in Brattleboro on Flat Street was before Brattleboro PD was able to implement a more proactive style of policing. This is a burden to the Hinsdale taxpayers as well as Hinsdale's officers who are already overworked. This is a serious issue that the police, Hinsdale Police Department can't continue to deal with at this level. Hinsdale feels this is an issue that should have already been addressed and needs to be dealt with immediately. Selectman Heller, it was a wonderful letter that you wrote and posted on Facebook explaining all the benefits that the island and the bridge could give to the town of Brattleboro and the promising to the Brattleboro taxpayers that this will be a little to no cost to the taxpayers. Unfortunately, Hinsdale can't promise the same to the Hinsdale taxpayers as policing and cleaning the island bridge area is already costing them money every day. Also, the picture posted of Selectman Heller and the volunteer group posing by a truck on the island after the cleanup, where only emergency vehicles have access to. I have a question. How did the truck get on the island? Mr. Morrison, I applaud your efforts as well for cleaning the island. But your cleaning does not deal with the major issues, which are poison ivy that our staff has already caught, needles that our staff needs to be leery of while working on the island, tents that are people's homes that become combative with staff and almost always have, that almost always have warrants and drug activity. Mr. Morrison, there's an email that went around.
Point of order. Point of order. Madam Chair, is it appropriate for comments to be directed to members of the public?
I don't too. I don't too, I don't.
I, I thought that was something that you've clarified that comments should be directed to the chair of the board.
It's, it's not, you know, she's, she's not criticizing these people. She's responding to public comments that they've made.
I, I agree with Isaac. I think, you know, Brett isn't involved in this discussion. I don't, I would prefer not to have comments.
Just say the gentleman and continue, please.
Okay, the gentleman that I found an email from explained that, that either municipality stupidity masquerading as fiscal responsibility or a poor version of brickmanship. Town of Hinsdale has NHDOT thinking that the town wants and are asking to already, for the bridges to come down. We can only speculate how David Scott found this message and why they're interpreting such a green light to close off the island and to investigate with the feds if they can take down the bridge. He suspects that they're seeing the latter as more of an appealing way to resolve the old Route one nineteen bridge future walkway, rather than continuing to navigate the irrational and political dysfunction of both towns. The town of Hinsdale will continue to pursue the demolition of the Anna Hunt Marsh Bridge. Hinsdale would like the town of Brattleboro to consider two options. One, to purchase the island and the Charles Dana Bridge from the state of New Hampshire, or two, to fully support the town of Hinsdale with pursuit to have both the Charles Dana and the Anna Hunt Marsh Bridge removed and replaced with two historical markers. We will not and can, and cannot move forward with any other decisions. Thank you, Catherine Lynch.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, um, Select Board, who would like to begin?
Oscar?
Yes. Thank you both for coming. It's a, it's a happy surprise to have you here. I'm sure that it'll be helpful for us to answer questions. And I also completely understand that your role is to advocate for your town, and I respect that. I do think what we have to talk about today is going to require sort of a frank discussion of Brattleboro's interests in this area. Specifically, what kind of position do we want to take? Personally, there were, that was a lengthy statement. There are a number of things in there that I probably disagree with or want to talk about more, but I think our job at the moment is to be a little more big picture. If I was going to put one container around my general thoughts, it is that this has been a ten-year project. The premise that the bridges would be maintained for pedestrian and bike access has been baked in from the beginning. It's been repeated over and over again in grant applications, in letters of support by both towns, by public figures, and in the interstate agreement between New Hampshire and Vermont. Nobody on this board wants Hinsdale to be disadvantaged. We don't want you to be unfairly treated or unfairly burdened. And I hope that the end of this longer process, which isn't going to end tonight, but that the result is something that everyone feels good about. That said, I feel a strong responsibility to advocate for keeping the bridges open because that has been the premise and the promise of these conversations for ten years. And the details of the project and the funding that went into it, including fifteen million dollars from Vermont, was based on years of public outreach and years of negotiation between the two states to get to this point. It's not an accident that that promise is in that conversation. And I find it a little frustrating to get to this late stage with the new bridge up, with everything done, with all of the problems that are before us, something that I think could have, was foreseen by the creation of the existing Bridges Subcommittee, by the ongoing conversation around this. To have this at, at the eleventh hour be, well, actually, these are a big liability, so they have to come down, and there's nothing we can do about it. So I think what I'm going to propose with a motion at some point soon is that this board takes a position. We ask town staff to advocate for that position, and then we reopen sort of a broader dialogue with the town of Hinsdale and come to some conclusion. But I think the first step is that this board should say what it wants to have happen. That's where I'm at. And I have a motion I'd like to make, but probably no, it's not the.
Let everybody speak first on the board, and then you can make your motion, and then we'll hear from the public.
I'd love to speak up, Oscar. I think you articulated that very well. I too am pleasantly surprised. I was, we, we, I was not informed that you would be at the meeting testifying. So thank you for that direct, you know, direct from Hinsdale's perspective. I appreciate that because it's been a little back and forth. I heard a couple incongruities that are, I'd love clarification on our end. I heard the bridge would be up for ten to twenty, would be, the renovated bridge would be good for ten to twenty years. That isn't the, the quote of years I've heard. I've heard closer to fifty years, but I hear we have a, just a difference there. I also wonder how quickly would you be able to change the federal jurisdiction of those as historic bridges so that they could get taken down on a federal level? Is that something that could happen quite quickly or not so quickly?
Do you want me to answer?
I do. That's why I asked the question.
Um, I was contacted by Assistant Commissioner David Rodriguez from State of New Hampshire, and your, the prior board had contacted him agreeing that the bridges should be taken down. He called, contacted me and said, all that's needed is a letter from the town of Brattleboro and a letter from the town of Hinsdale saying, we agree that the bridges need to come down. It goes back to NEPA and the bridges come down.
In exchange for a historic marker?
Historic marker.
And a loss of ten, ten million dollars that the state of, that the?
That they would put into renovating two dilapidated bridges.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, let's move down the line and I'll say what I think. First of all, Hinsdale's asked really a simple question. Buy the bridge or help us tear it down? And that's really what we're here to discuss. And it seems to be that, that some of us have an option that is not on the table. And I believe that Hinsdale can and probably will act without us. And it would be nice to work with them and, um, nice of them to ask us. But I consider that their reasons that they are more than hesitating are real because other towns do not have the same problems that Brattleboro has. The state of Vermont has placed one of the thorniest problems in the country at, at our doorstep, actually, not on our doorstep, on our streets. And other towns do not have that responsibility and do not want that responsibility and are not going to put up with that responsibility. And that's pretty much that. So I've been to other towns lately. I've been to Hinsdale. I've been to Greenfield. I've been to Fellows Falls. I've been to, you know, all sorts of towns. And they do not have our problems. And I, I, I feel the, the shock and awe that Hinsdale is experiencing when they're coming to terms with what Brattleboro deals with on a daily basis. And, you know, they're not having it. So, um, that's why we can't have nice things. You know, I know I'm a mom, but I'm telling you, this is why we can't have nice things. And, um, you know, as for NEPA, I happen to be a NEPA expert. And I can tell you that it's, will be not hard for Hinsdale to make the case that the situation has changed and that there are issues with the public access as originally proposed, and also that the existing bridge, the new bridge, has public access, which was not originally envisioned, as far as I understand. So I think it would be a relatively easy lift for Hinsdale to do this without our consent. However, I do see an opportunity for Brattleboro to have a nice waterfront park. We had a presentation a couple of meetings ago for a waterfront park associated with the museum and sculpture. And I think it would be an appropriate thing for all of this energy and effort to make that park more of a waterfront park for our community. It is one of the only places in town where we have a significant amount of waterfront land that is not encumbered by the railroad. And so that's a great idea, and I think that that's what we should be energized about and raising money for and making the best of and stop chasing this windmill idea about a bridge that is not ours to plan. Peter?
Yeah, just doing a few things here.
Okay, Isaac?
Welcome to Brattleboro. I'm also surprised and that you're here and glad to meet you. We're here to discuss a recommendation that's in our packet here about what guidance to give the town manager in regards to a potential letter to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. When my recollection is at that meeting a few weeks ago when we talked about this letter, the plan was that we would ask the Hinsdale Select Board if they would like to join us on this letter. And if they declined, that we would then go ahead and send that to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation independently. And fortunately, we have, we can go back in the minutes and, and look at that. But regardless, there are certainly concerns that will need to be addressed in terms of the safety and the, of the, of the, on the bridge and on the island. But one of the things that I keep thinking about is how when there were cars, when there was a lot of traffic on the bridge with the cars, we didn't hear about these same concerns on the island. And I just got a bunch of people together outside of my Select Board work, and we just had bagels on the, right at the entrance to the bridge. We got together on Friday, on July fourth. And half the people had never even set foot on that bridge, didn't they? And I think there wasn't, there's not necessarily a widespread awareness that, hey, this is open for pedestrians, for bicyclists. And I would anticipate that when you get more traffic on there, there's going to be less illegal activity going on because you're going to have more eyes. You're going to have more people out enjoying it. And when there's more energy around the place, that, that shifts how, how it's used. That is an incredible resource for our community. I had the, the opportunity to stand out, to go for a walk out there multiple times over the last several months. And it's beautiful to be up on the river, to hear the birds singing, to see the trees, to be above the water. It's incredible because this town is built right next to a river, and yet we have very limited ability to enjoy this incredible resource, the Connecticut River, right next to our town because the view is mostly blocked by the buildings. And if you think about it, if you are downtown and the lower part of Main Street and you want to have a picnic, you know, you kind of have to, like, the main option is to go up the commons. But here is a, a resource that's right, right available. And I would like to see us explore more of the option of potentially, you know, could Brattleboro purchase or the state of Vermont purchase this bridge? Could, is there an option in terms of what would be the options for purchasing the island? In terms of the, would that require an act of Congress? It would be great to get a little bit more information on what that process would be like. But also, you know, we've discussed requests for proposals that it would be great to see what interests is there in, in private and public and nonprofit investment in this resource and in fulfilling the vision that was in the ten years making of, of this as a pedestrian and bike bridge. Thank you.
Peter, do you have comments you'd like to make at this?
Uh, sure. I, for the record, knew you both were going to be here, so. Welcome. So it's a really interesting sort of a dilemma we have. And, and I've, and I've mentioned this before so many times. Like, I feel a sincere ownership to those bridges because we have to look at them every day. But it is like looking across my yard to see something that my neighbor has that, that I would like to have, but I don't. So to Liz's point, I don't, I don't feel like we can tell you what to do in your backyard with, with the problems. I would hope that we might be able to come to some sort of a, an arrangement where we can take another hard and fast look at it because I do love all the ideas that I've heard presented. And people have called me out on the Chesterfield Bridge and my referencing it as a dystopian hellscape. And the more I've kind of thought about that, I realize it really isn't a fair comparison because that, that extra bridge out in West Chesterfield really isn't in our line of sight every day as this one is. And I feel the energy would be different. That said, as a sitting member of a Select Board, that also has to be sensitive to a police budget. I appreciate what you've, what you've brought and the words that you've, you've brought here. But my quick question is, that letter, last and final? That's it? We're not going to entertain anything else that this Select Board might ask of the town of Hinsdale? Maybe even if it's just for a little extra time to sort of maybe sort some stuff out?
The Hinsdale Select Board is pretty firm.
Okay. I appreciate that. I appreciate that position. I really do. Yeah, so again, we've only got seven percent of this conversation. So I, I didn't, I mean, my, so I feel like my back's against the wall. I would love the opportunity to have a few of my own conversations short of that. It's your backyard.
All right. Let's hear from the public.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
And then I'd like to briefly speak to it.
Sure.
Okay, so I move that Brattleboro affirm as its official position that the Charles Dana and Anna Hunt Marsh Bridges be restored and kept open for pedestrian and bicycle access as described in the Hinsdale Bridge Project Plan, grant applications, and interstate agreements. I further move to direct the town manager and staff to advocate for that position with the town of Hinsdale, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and any other relevant entities to advocate for continued pedestrian and bicycle access across both bridges and to reopen discussions with the Hinsdale Select Board about a mutually satisfactory resolution to the Hinsdale Bridge Project. And the brief comment I want to make is that I really, I, I appreciate how both of you have come here and you've made the case for your town's interests directly, one might even say bluntly. I think what's clear, I think we need to similarly, we don't have to walk out of this meeting with a plan for how everything works. I think we need to say what it is we want and what we want to advocate for, and then that conversation will continue. Because it's pretty clear that if this Select Board says, ah, we should just take them down, I think that's what would happen. Instead, by voting for this motion, this gives us an opportunity to assert what rights we do have, what promises we feel were made to engage with Vermont State, with VTRENs, with local representatives on both sides of the river, and actually have a longer conversation. So I'm not proposing that this motion solves every problem or that it is some sort of complete solution or project plan, just that it is a necessary first step for us to take if we want to keep open a future where the bridges are still up and usable. So that's all. Thank you.
You know, it's really interesting because a couple of years ago.
You know, it's really interesting because a couple of years ago, there was a councilman who's, a selectman in Hinsdale who's also a representative, or was a representative. Anyway, I was chair of the Select Board a couple of years ago, and he called me because he wanted to talk about the naming of the bridge. And we had a conversation, and I was really crazy about what he wanted to name the bridge at, and I really didn't think that Brattleboro would be crazy about it. And then after our 40-minute conversation, he said to me, well, that's really very nice. We're asking you, but really, we're telling you. So, you know, you got the cards, we got 7%, and I respect that. And so I don't really see, you know, where this motion would go, other than being difficult.
We can agree to disagree with your reading of that.
And let's hear from the public. Michael, you raise your hand.
To Michael.
Oh, to Michael.
Somebody else coming?
Michael, are you Michael?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's Charles, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Michael Fairchild, lived in West Brattleboro. I happen to be a Brattleboro, you know, grew up here, the 50s, 60s. I attended the earliest meetings regarding this proposals for what could happen to the bridges. The meetings were in Hinsdale. I, from the get-go, have proposed that they be taken down. I've been encouraged to come here tonight by Elizabeth because I think she understands I'm someone who's had the eyes on the river like nobody else really ever has, that 35 years from April to November, I'm on the river, have the eyes on the river. I can see the homeless situation that extends from the old Ferry Road all the way down to Vernon. If you go onto the Chesterfield Bridges right now, on the Brattleboro side, there's two family tents there with people in it. There's always been somebody there. If you go to the other side, there's somebody that I recognize that's been there for years. I waved to him and chat to him. So my concern was, when traffic stops on those bridges, we're going to see more instances of crime, and I'm really blessed, really, to hear the fire, the police chief here tonight explain in numbers and incidents what's going on out there. So interestingly, you know, a month ago, maybe, there was that picture in the paper showed, you know, the volunteers that went out onto the bridge supposedly cleaned up. Well, the next day, which I'm familiar with what's talked about, there is a homeless site underneath the Far Bridge on the west side, and you could expect normally to see people there. You can see groups of people there now, because I go under that bridge regularly in my canoe. And so, you know, it's, it's, and Isaac, you talked about maybe a nice place to take a picnic with a family. This morning, I took a stroll through the Preston, you know, Prescott Lot, you know, and where you crossed over to the, to the co-op, there's four people lying there. You cross over, and then to the left, there's two more people there. I crossed over to what's called Liberty Park, as I understand it, and the town has a recycling wood bin, and they have a trash bin. And there was three people there, and there's trash all over that lawn. My understanding is the Brattleboro Rec Department or something has to pick that up regularly before they can, you know, mow the lawn there. So my concern is, is, is safety, you know? And, you know, what we're hearing is, it's not a safe place, and I have no belief that it's going to get somehow miraculously, it's going to get safer. And I think if you, someone has the idea of maybe putting a pavilion out there, putting picnic tables or benches, I know who's going to be sitting in those. There's going to be a situation where a lot of people are going to be very, feel uncomfortable passing through onto those bridges. It's my feeling. And I have, I have another thought, you know, there's, there's a reporting in the paper, going back first to the incidents where, you know, Brattleboro Hospital is looking for a surgeon. So they invited, you know, a couple in, put them up in the latches, and the woman apparently had an incident on probably flat streets in that area where she vowed, you know, this is not a place to come to raise a family. We have this kind of incident.
One reporter, Madam Chair, I really apologize for being a timekeeper, but are you looking at your flashing light right now?
I see. Thank you. Please wrap it up, Michael.
Okay, fine. No, I think I'm pretty well, but I think there's fear in this town, you know, and there's people that don't feel safe, and this is not going to help the situation. It's not going to be a good place to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Bob. And then Ivan, I see you back there.
Robert Ozer, Brattleboro. Chief Evans.
Please.
Please to meet you.
Please. Please direct your comments to me, Bob.
Oh, I wasn't commenting, I was just saying hello.
Okay.
Wanted to give you some points of information, just personal points of information. So I was in that picture that you're all talking about on June the 28th, where I helped a few people clean up the area under the Brattleboro-Hinsdale Bridges. And the area, the two areas that I cleaned up, one on the west and one on the east, both appeared to be washed out prior encampments, washed out to the extent that the blankets and pillows and, and stuff were not usable and had been soaked. I found one intact needle in the time I was there. I found some pieces of other needles. On July the 1st, as Isaac, I think, mentioned earlier, many individuals who had hotel vouchers, those vouchers lapsed, creating a need for shelter for 51 households, 73 adults, and 34 children in the Brattleboro District alone. On July the 2nd, there was a news article that indicated that new encampments were found by the Hinsdale PD underneath the bridges. As of July the 3rd, I observed no trespass signage installed, and I heard at that time that some more secure wire was going to be installed. On July the 4th, I heard that an elderly man was arrested by Hinsdale PD for trespassing. Do we know the circumstances of that? I see him at 56 seconds. Another day, I saw folks sitting on the embankment outside the no trespass area, talking with a visitor. On July the 7th, I observed what appeared to be a filled plastic grocery bag standing upright within the roped-off area. Since it's marked no trespass, I didn't investigate further. On July the 8th, I saw the no trespass signs and chain were torn down. There's an overflow of people hanging out in Plaza Park. Connections are more important than walls. Before I built a wall, I'd asked to know, I'm quoting here, what I was walling in or walling out, and to whom I was likely to give offense, something there is that doesn't love a wall. And at one minute, one second over, both communities need to talk through mutually acceptable alternatives, perhaps with the assistance of a mediator. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. Let's take a break, and as soon as we come back, we'll have Ivan, and let's take a five-minute break.[1161.98]
And CD Thursday.
Okay, Ivan. And then Charles.
Hello, Ivan Hennessy, District Eight, I think. This is not really relevant to your decision, it's relevant to future decisions. Because what's been laid out here is a textbook perfect recipe for concentrating undesirable behavior. Collectively, we've taken a space that gets a lot of traffic, but is relatively secluded and can kind of be restricted a little bit. And we've removed all of the desirable traffic and told people, you know respectable people, that they shouldn't be there. And we've made it a space that is attractive to everything that we claim we don't want to see around. It's shocking how poorly this was managed. And all I can say is, what the fuck did you expect to happen?
Charles.
What's going, Charles Wonat? And I'd like to first thank the ladies from Hinsdale for coming to share their perspective, their viewpoints, and their understanding. And it helps me to begin to understand what you're going through on your side. And someone mentioned, I think it might have been Oscar, about communities coming together to solve a problem. And today, as I was taking some notes, I wrote down the Connecticut River. And first time I realized, the first seven letters of the Connecticut River are connect. And we connect over the Connecticut River. And I went and did some research, and I'll give you my reasons for my opinion after I share my research here. So this is from the Hinsdale-Brattleboro Greenway Project. Planning for the Hinsdale-Brattleboro existing bridges and island area. New Hampshire Department of Transportation and the Vermont Agency of Transportation plan to replace the Charles-Dana and Anna-Hunt Marsh Bridges that connect Hinsdale, New Hampshire to Brattleboro via Route 119 by constructing a new single-span bridge over the Connecticut River. Okay, that's been done. Congratulations. After construction, the new bridge will serve Route 119 traffic. And the existing bridges and parts of the road previously used for Route 119 traffic will be repurposed to host pedestrian and bicycle activities. So this is kind of an early idealistic vision. Repurposing of the Charles-Dana and Anna-Hunt Marsh Bridges represents a unique opportunity for Hinsdale, New Hampshire, and Brattleboro, Vermont to reimagine their connection to each other and to the Connecticut River. A citizens advisory group serving as the Hinsdale-Brattleboro Bridge Project Advisory Committee was formed to provide guidance to the New Hampshire Department of Traffic and the Vermont Agency of Traffic and the towns of Hinsdale and Brattleboro on design matters related to both projects. The Hinsdale-Brattleboro Existing Bridges Subcommittee was formed to focus specifically on the historic bridges, the island, and their connections to the towns. The Subcommittee's charge is to evaluate existing conditions that may have a bearing on the future use and management of the existing bridges and island. Conduct outreach and engagement activities to understand public sentiment related to the bridges and island. And develop an inclusive vision for the island and the bridge area that is informed by the cross-section.
Charles, I'm going to interrupt you before Amanda does.
So, yeah, I was just wondering whatever happened to this plan.
Thank you. Whoa, whoa. I've, Dick, I promised previously. And then Jason.
Dick DeGray, District Eight. I applaud you for coming here with a black and white proposal. I'm an advocate for the taxpayers. We just passed a budget in this town that's, what, 12% increase on our taxes. And we're talking about buying a parcel of property now and taking it over. I don't want to see this project go through, so I hope that you do follow through with your project. I hope that you don't sell, that there isn't some sort of agreement to sell this to a private entity. If it's not sold to Brattleboro, which I hope doesn't happen, that it's not sold to a private entity, that that burden will fall on the taxpayers of Brattleboro some way, somehow. We have a lot of areas in our town that are beautiful, that are underutilized, and all of a sudden, this is the gem of the town. Somebody was talking about Plaza Park and what's going on in Plaza Park. I go by there every morning about quarter or five, and there's a no vacancy sign that's lit up because there's so many people there. And we have a real issue in our town. And I believe that the money and the time that would go into developing this parcel of property, that that would become the new summer home for our vacationers that are here right now. So I applaud you. I appreciate the fact that you don't want the burden, and I don't want the burden either. People in Brattleboro, their taxes are high enough, there's enough recreational areas in our community that we don't need to add another one. Thank you.
You, I don't remember your name. Yeah, you.
Claire Gillis, Brattleboro. I can walk to the bridge from my house, and when it was still open, I used to walk across the bridge all the time. I have to say that my understanding was always, like Oscar was saying, that when the new bridge opened, the old bridge would be turned into a pedestrian and bicycle spot. My understanding, as you're saying, that for 10 years, there was a discussion between Hinsdale and Brattleboro, and there was an agreement between the two towns that this was the plan. And I find it utterly disingenuous at this point in time to be saying, well, Brattleboro has all these problems. Brattleboro has had a lot of problems for a very long time. And, you know, I would also point out that one of the reasons that so many people who need social services are around Vermont and are around Brattleboro is that we have social services. We provide this kind of thing for people. And, yeah, that's, that's all that I have to say.
We have some people, oh, Jason, I promise.
Thank you, I'm Jason Cooper. I live right on Main Street. I look out over those bridges and the island. There is no question that the social situation in this town has been a real struggle. As Michael Fairchild pointed out, there's, as he conduces the river, he sees encampments all up and down the river, on both sides of the river. I know, as I've walked up Mount Wantastic, and I see homeless encampments up, spread through the woods up there as well. So I'm not sure that, you know, the island itself is a focal point. I think it's just one additional point because it is there. And I'm concerned about a couple of things. One is that if those bridges were taken down, I believe that would make it even more attractive to homeless people. They'd figure out a way to get out there because no one's going to bother them out there, and they'd have a grand old time, and it would be even worse. The social problem is a different issue from the island and that as a resource. I was one of the people who started 15 years ago trying to begin access to the West River Trail. When we first started working on that, there were at least half a dozen homeless encampments. And this was, again, 15 years ago. This is long before it became the problem that it is today. But those half dozen campsites, upon our going out and cleaning up all the trash and making that area accessible to the town and to the people, probably hardly a person in this room has not been out on that trail and enjoyed it. There's no trace of trash, of homelessness, of drug problems out on that trail. It's an incredible amenity to the town, and people come here for that amenity. I very truly believe that this island could be the same. Certainly, it is a distinct challenge for Hinsdale. They are not the primary beneficiaries of that we are. I don't think there is the financial resource or wherewithal in this town for this town to pay for that either. I do believe there is enough private interest in that land and that as a resource, an amenity for this community, that it could be done in a private way and in a way that would make it so that it was no longer an attraction to the kind of people who are using it now in a way that's not good for the rest of the community. I, before the fence went up, my wife and I would go walk that loop, out one bridge and out the other, every evening after dinner that we could. It is a wonderful space, it is a wonderful amenity, and I believe it will enhance the benefit to our town even more. How can we take care of Hinsdale in this and not bury them in costs? I think that if it is taken over by a private entity, I believe it can be cared for and, and made an amenity privately by volunteers, not using the town's resource money and not becoming a burden to Hinsdale. The bridges are a challenging issue, I'm not sure how to deal with that one. I think that's the biggest challenge because they are going to, they are a maintenance issue now. I believe what I've heard when I was on the bridge committee, we were told that the renovation would make it closer to 50 years because we're no longer having salt on those bridges, there's no longer going to be tractor-trailers passing over it, it's going to be primarily pedestrians. So that's one option, but we have to deal with the other parts first, which is to make it so that it's not an attractive nuisance, so that our town can take advantage of it and the residents of Hinsdale can take advantage of it too. It's not just about the homeless problem, that's all up and down the river, that's all throughout our community, and that's got to be kept separate. But this island could be a great resource, and I hope that the town of Brattleboro is willing to let volunteer organizations or help facilitate at least a look at this before we jump on tearing those bridges down. What can we do? I think we can all win with this, and, and I hope we can do that. Thank you.
Representative Burke.
Thank you, Representative Molly Burke, District Eight, and I'm on the Transportation Committee. I was thinking about this the other day, and I, many, many people here probably know that in 1951, we had a beautiful opera house in Brattleboro, and it was demolished. And it was demolished because the use had sort of diminished and, and the town offices were able to move into this building, which was vacated because of the building of the new high school. And now we think, what if that opera house were here in Brattleboro? And once something is gone, that's it. And once those bridges are gone, then any opportunity in, you know, in the future to use those as what we've been discussing will be gone. Jason just referenced the West River Trail. I also think about West River Park. It used to be a bunch of undesirables down at the swimming hole at West River, before West River Park was developed. Once that place was developed, it's all families there, it's just been a really great amenity for the town. So I think those are two really good examples of how we could think broadly and, and with some kind of vision about this situation instead of thinking that we've, we've got to just cut this off. So thank you very much for listening, and I could yield my time to somebody else.
Thank you, Molly. Nell. Nell, and then Jackie, and then we'll go to Zoom.
Nell Mayo, District Eight. I'm going to ask a question that we probably don't have the answer to, but I think given the decision that's attempted to be being made tonight has to be asked, is what would that cost look like? And I was, I was trying to see if Mr. Fisher and Ms. Clarice could help me with this on the break, but if that does not change the jurisdiction and the Hinsdale PD still have an obligation to their jurisdiction, does that cost basically have to subsidize what they're estimating an additional two police officers would be required for, for the patrol?
And they'd have to be willing?
Yes. Well, that's also beyond my understanding. I, I'm unclear on if the town wants to pursue purchasing it or even considering purchasing it. I believe you all need the information of what that initial cost looks like and what the legislative or jurisdictional challenges are and how that would be worked out. I'm not clear on if, if a town purchases property in another state and there are still public safety calls to that state, obviously we have mutual aid agreements, but are, is the Hinsdale PD still obliged to make those calls because that is obviously a complication?
Would you, would you like Bob to answer that question? Because it's been asked, and he has the answer.
You're asking with regard to the responsibility of Hinsdale to respond. Hinsdale owns the island, so they are the only police department that has the jurisdiction to respond. The town of Brattleboro has no jurisdiction to respond to those islands.
I, I suppose I'm asking if Hinsdale wants to wash their hands of this responsibility because of the cost, and a call is made, and they're the only ones with jurisdiction, do they have the opportunity not to respond? So that's.
We wouldn't do that. We would still respond.
And I, I hope it's clear that I'm asking that from a point of ignorance, I'm not trying to suggest any intent on anyone's side there. Those are questions I have. I think cost is very important for you all to know regardless of the decision you make. Something I did want to add my voice to that I think other people have here is that, oh, we're talking about a concern for public spaces being co-opted or made undesirable to people who basically are not homeless or living rough because of the amount of people who are living rough occupying that space. I don't think that's inherent to public spaces, I think that's inherent to need. I think regardless of where we develop public spaces, we'll see a concern with that until people's needs are met, and that's just an unfortunate reality. And, yeah, I, I agree that I think people, I think you'll still see encampments on the bank with or without the bridges. So thank you for listening, and thank you for your answers.
What did I say? Jackie, and then to Zoom. Okay. Sit tight, Susan.
Jackie Reese, downtown Brattleboro resident and RTM member. I am not hearing from the people who are interested in keeping the bridge as a, say, recreational area for us, for the town of Brattleboro. What I'm not hearing is any seeming concern about the problem in Brattleboro that we're having a hard time keeping contained. And if, if that were to happen, if we were to be able to keep the problem in Brattleboro contained, and I'm just going to pitch for the BRAC team and the downtown transportation center being turned into a downtown hub of the police station, that would lessen the number of, of people who would be going over the bridge and turning it into their personal recreation space. And I kind of feel, and I might be wrong, but I kind of feel that aside from the maintenance of the bridge, that would solve a good part of Hinsdale's problem. If there weren't as many people who were trespassing onto the island and camping there and making it unsafe for other people, whatever your numbers are, whatever your numbers are, the, the, the presence of people who are not in town to shop and hang out and, you know, do the regular things that you do downtown, make it uncomfortable for people who are in town to shop and hang out and do the regular things that you do downtown. If they're in town and they're making people uncomfortable, they're going to be making people uncomfortable on the island, even more so, because you're even further from the protection of the police department. And in those instances, the protection of the police department is what will keep people downtown. I know this because I work at the Latches Hotel, I work at, and, and I hear people from the Latches Theater, people who'll come in and say, I'm not staying for the night because I just went out to my car and I was approached by somebody. And there's nothing that I can say to them. There's nothing that I can say. I know the BRAC team has made themselves known to the hotel and to the theater. I know the BRAT team has made themselves known to the hotel and to the theater to escort people, escort people from the theater to their cars. I, I'm just going to make a pitch again. If we had the downtown Brattleboro station, you know, in the transportation center, I think that that would eliminate a lot of it. It's in the heart of the problem. So if you're going to be supporting opening up the bridge, keeping, so that we can have access to the island-
I apologize, I apologize, Jackie, but-
I'm 13 seconds over.
Okay.
I'm 13 seconds-
Amanda.
And we're combining a lot of different topics now, which will come later in the meeting, so-
Amanda.
Thank you so much.
Let her finish. Just finish up, Jackie, please.
That's all that I'm saying. If you're going to make it comfortable for people to be in town, then people will be more comfortable outside of town, on the island, if you have that kind of protection.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Who's first on Zoom?
We're going to Lisa Lineman first, and Dave Lindsey.
Hi. I'm in District Seven, but also a business owner on, at 118 Elliott Street, and also direct the Brattleboro Words Trail, which is a history project involving the town. I would like our select board to vote in favor of Oscar's motion because I think that there's a lot of kind of knee-jerk reaction, and I don't, again, I understand Hinsdale's predicament. It's unfortunate, but it is summertime, and Brattleboro does absorb a lot of everyone else's problems, including Hinsdale's problems, that come across and get services and hang out and are allowed to hang out in our town, and it's, it is a problem. There's no doubt. However, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater here. It's summertime. There's encampments all up and down the New Hampshire side, too. The island, because of its being sort of cordoned off now, is becoming more of a problem. I was part of group that cleaned up. We didn't find that many needle encampments. I was actually surprised at how clean the island was, and I've been riding my bike across nearly daily and really enjoying the view and everything else. It was interesting to hear that the Hinsdale people want to keep the Charles Dana Bridge open, it sounds like, and so they would have access to an island from that side, but they're kind of expecting that we're going to remove our bridge over to the island, which is really in our historic downtown. It's very centrally located, and it would be a tremendous amenity. So, you know, all the time and energy that went in, the $10 million federal grant that was given to create a pedestrian and bikeway leading to the Ashwellah Trail, all Mount Wantastica, this would be a great gateway to New Hampshire and would have a lot of positive potential benefits tourism-wise from people coming to Brattleboro, going over to New Hampshire. Want to correct, I, I believe Great River Hydro actually owns the island. Hinsdale owns the bridges, but Great River Hydro owns the island, from what I understand. I think that, you know, there's a failure of imagination here. I'm very upset to hear my select board chair talking so negatively about Brattleboro, saying we can't have nice things because we've chosen to be a compassionate community. I understand we have problems, but that's, our select board is here to advocate on behalf of Brattleboro, not to, to be sympathetic to, you know, everyone else's concerns. Liz, you're the, you're here to promote what might be good for Brattleboro, and I would urge the select board to vote for a more expansive vision of what's possible at that island, that great amenity in our downtown. We have the new Amtrak station opening up in May of 2026. We have many sites on the Brattleboro Words Trail that we're planning to bring bicyclists over to visit the Hinsdale post office and the rail trail and Fort Hill and Hinsdale. I'm just saying, it's a failure of imagination, and if we could make that big new bridge happen, why can't we work together as communities on something that would be so mutually beneficial? Thank you.
And I'm, as I was called out, I should say, that I am advocating for a nice waterfront park, as we saw presented to us a couple of weeks ago, and make a waterfront portion there, the sculpture park, et cetera. That was a lovely plan. Who's next, Seth?
Dave Cohen.
Mr. Cohen. Can we, we can't hear you, Dave.
Dave, I think you need to take your headphones out of the jack.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, Dave Cohen, District Nine. I just, I agree with everything Lisa just said. It was said beautifully. I, I, I don't know if I can add anything to that. I totally agree with Oscar, his recommendation, his motion. And this is a very complex issue, so there's so much funding, policing, all these things. What I just wanted to speak to is having a car-free space and a major attraction in Brattleboro. I mean, think of Shelburne Falls. What would Shelburne Falls be without the Bridge of Flowers? We have an opportunity, a major opportunity, to provide a, an attraction that could be really beautiful if we really put our mind to it and if we have that imagination to bring to the space. I realize there's all kinds of legal issues, funding issues and all that, but a car-free space for children, for hikers, elderly, families, our communities are inundated with these things we call cars and trucks. We think that's totally normal. But if you go to other countries, there are car-free spaces where people get to practice actually being human beings, using their bodies, not being, you know, inside two tons of steel, glass, and, and whatever. So I think this is a really, really important thing. This is a great place for kids to first learn how to ride bikes, to see picnics. I understand there's all, a host of other issues that we need to pay attention to. I also want to second what, you know, Jason Cooper said about private interests and private entities. I think there's a real potential there, and somebody like Jason was really good at kind of bringing those things together. I think we could form a committee to really kind of suss out all those possibilities. And, you know, just the last thing I'd just like to say is like, this would, again, be an incredible, beautiful attraction to Brattleboro and to Hinsdale if we could really make this something that is viable and that is clean and that, you know, of course, I think that's absolutely important. And I totally understand the concerns of Hinsdale. I think if we work together, we can find a solution and like, you know, what Isaac said and Amanda and Oscar. No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Who's next?
Lindsey.
Lindsey.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi. So my name's Lindsey. I live on Main Street. I actually am starting medical school in the fall, so I wanted to comment on the story about the surgeon, but also not just that, but other things. I personally can't think of a more beautiful and vibrant community to raise my family, so I guess that surgeon's a wash because I will come back here and I will be a doctor. So I had a couple of questions. One, to echo, what is the cost of the bridge? So I feel like Hinsdale's made it really clear that they're interested in either tearing down the bridge or selling it to us, and so it'd be really useful to know what that cost is, even if it's like not feasible. It would be nice to know what that would cost. I'm also wondering if there's a way for us to, in this scenario, if it was feasible for us to buy the bridges and the island, I believe they're like proposing that we could also buy, would there be a way for us to take on responsibility for the policing of that island, or is that just like not legally possible? And then just from like a public health standpoint, I think having the bridges stay as like walking and biking bridges increases the amount of green spaces in the community, increases mental health and physical health, and so I think it would be a huge public health improvement as well. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bellegor, then Susan, then that's it. Let's see, we have time for those last two.
You have to unmute.
Yeah, okay. Paul Bellegor, the owner of the Whitestone, or the Rail and River, the new name for the Whitestone. I just wanted to answer certain questions from Lindsey. The irony is, we need all participants to get this project moving. We need the state of New Hampshire to continue repair the bridges. Obviously, they're not going to maintain the bridge, but they will invest $10 million to rehab the bridges. We need that. That would buy us close to 50 years of the use of bridges. We need to satisfy the Hinsdale, Hinsdale, Hinsdale Police Department. I totally understand the dilemma, understand jeopardizing officers' lives when they get onto this island at night especially. And I totally understand what a marvelous, an incredible opportunity for the town of Bralboro to have those bridges and the island and to have the, those bridges and the island to be used by the community. This could become a destination. It is something that can be developed in conjunction with the Rail and River or Whitestone, where the restaurant can extend onto the bridge. We can have tables. We can have chairs. We can have, we can serve food on that bridge. One of the ways to actually make it happen is to lease the bridges from the state of New Hampshire and perhaps lease the island from the state of New Hampshire as well or from the, from the, from the company that owns the, the island. And perhaps hire a private security service to maintain the order on the island and, you know, over a period of time, make that to be a problem with the homeless people go away because it is probably a temporary issue, like anything else with Bralboro. Things go up, things go down, and a lot of people already made clear that those problems can be fixed. So I do believe that losing this chance of having the bridges and the island to serve Bralboro community would be a massive detriment for Bralboro. And, and if we were to put our heads together, work as one unit with the state of New Hampshire, with Hinsdale, Bralboro, and all the nonprofits, we can make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth, let's set the timer to two minutes and let these three people speak, and then we'll vote, and that's it. Susan, then Wendy, then Gemma.
Susan Belleville, Brattleboro, District Eight. Couple of things, but I'm, let's cut to the chase here. I'd like to suggest that maybe Oscar's motion be amended to change it to private individuals rather than Brattleboro staff and town manager to investigate resources and opportunities to see how these bridges and the island could be incorporated into a much more usable space. The town of Brattleboro and the staff here already has tons of work to do, and they're already short a number of significant personnel. And I think that there's so much private interest in this project that that is the route that would be most beneficial to further the project along and can also have some dialogue with New Hampshire and all of the federal and state entities that are required to get this project as, as you're so enthusiastic about off-dead center and solve the problems.
Thank you, Susan. Oscar, are you interested in amending your motion?
It's not really what I'm looking to do. I, I hear what you're saying, Sue, but I'd rather not.
Wendy.
Thank you. Wendy Harrison, State Senator. I live in downtown Brattleboro and frequent it a lot, and I think Brattleboro is a great place to live, and I don't want to live anywhere else. Just regarding some of what I've heard, the Build Grant was the grant that funded all three bridges, the new bridge and the restoration of the old bridges. And it's a, it's a $50 million grant that New Hampshire has, the state of Vermont has, is a party to that, but the state of New Hampshire has $10 million to, to renovate those bridges, and those, and that renovation is projected to be able to last another 50 years without a major work. So, so that is also my understanding. I would love to advocate, I will advocate for the town of Brattleboro with, with the state of Vermont on what we can do to, to get that renovation started sooner. I had not heard into, about this two-year lag until tonight. There's a lot of new information that's coming out, and I think we need to take our time, not throw the baby out with the bathwater. These bridges are really important. It could be amazing for economic development and for quality of life. I think that might, okay, it's on my phone for once. I, I, I think we can be deliberate also about the, how the police work with each other. I have learned about some other possibilities where there could be New Hampshire training at a certain level, so that perhaps the BRAT team could be part of this. There's a lot of private sector folks who are, are ready to be involved. Downtown merchants are probably split on it, but there's enough interest, I think, that, that we really need to, to go forward and see what our options are. And I think the town manager can easily incorporate the private folks into the conversation, and I'm willing to help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gemma.
Hi. Gemma Seymour, District Eight, RTM, and Brattleboro Planning Commission. As a person who's been car-free in this town for four years now, I have always known that the fact that the plan for the new bridge incorporated keeping the old bridges as theoretically pedestrian and bicycle bridges was always really nothing more than an excuse to allow the new bridge to be built without those facilities. It was really a cost-saving measure for New Hampshire to trick us into believing that we were going to have these bridges for the foreseeable future for pedestrian and bicycle access. Under no circumstance should Brattleboro be contemplating purchasing this land from Hinsdale for one very simple reason. It's Hinsdale's problem, and Hinsdale is not a walkable community. That land has negligible value to Hinsdale, whereas it potentially has great value to Brattleboro. So I see one of two things happening here. Either we in Brattleboro do nothing, in which case the problem remains Hinsdale's problem, and they don't want that problem because they can't afford it, and frankly, neither can we afford it either. The other idea is that the state of New Hampshire simply cedes that land to the state of Vermont to become part of the town of Brattleboro, and then we get to do whatever we want with it. The $10 million that has been granted or allocated for the renovation of those bridges, I think it's pretty safe to say that's never going to be spent on those renovations. Those bridges need to come down. They were designed for vehicular traffic, not for pedestrian traffic. They are in great disrepair. $10 million may refurbish them for a short period of time, but I think that money would be better spent by demolishing those bridges. And if we in Brattleboro do nothing, I don't see Hinsdale spending the money to take those bridges down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Are we ready to vote?
I would love to hear the motion again and understand it and whether we're bringing anything to the table or-
I'd like to make a statement as well, and it looks like, Isaac, you had your end.
Oh, I was just seeing that there was one other person.
Oh, one other person rising.
Yes, so should I restate the motion?
Restate the motion.
Okay. I move that Brattleboro affirm as its official-
I move that Brattleboro affirm as its official position that the Charles Dana and Anna Hunt Marsh Bridges be restored and kept open for pedestrian and bicycle access as described in the Hinsdale Bridge Project Plan, Grant Applications, and Interstate Agreements. I further move to direct the town manager and staff to advocate for that position with the town of Hinsdale, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and any other relevant entities, to advocate for continued pedestrian and bicycle access across both bridges, and to reopen discussions with the Hinsdale Select Board about a mutually satisfactory resolution to the Hinsdale Bridge Project.
John, do you have any comments to make on the motion?
I just think that, I understand that, and I think if we're not bringing something to the table, it's going to be difficult to do that. So I'm happy to advocate, but if we have no resources or anything to bring to this conversation, I just think it's a long shot, but happy to try.
So, I disagree. I think what's been happening for the last six months-ish, it's getting late, so things are going to get vaguer, but has been that Brattleboro has not taken an official position. The old Select Board did not vote on a position, this board did not vote on a position, and things have sort of just been happening. Meetings have been happening, decisions have been being made, and I've been told at least, for example, that VTранs has said, "Brattleboro doesn't seem to care, so we don't really have a position." That's an example of how us not saying simply what we want. Nobody in this motion is talking about making a purchase, or allocating money, or anything like that. We are saying, if we vote for it, that this is what we want to have happen, and that that needs to be our position when we talk about it, as opposed to the status quo right now, which is that we kind of don't have a position and we need to talk more. And specifically, I think, taking a position with or without a plan was the agenda item and was the thing that we've been waiting on, that we said we would accomplish at this meeting. So, in my opinion, I think this motion accomplishes what we're looking for.
Well, it doesn't accomplish answering the questions that Hinsdale has asked us to answer.
All due respect to both our guests, answering Hinsdale's two questions is not what's on our agenda today. What's on our agenda today is taking a position on the bridge issue. It's great to have that surrounding context, but that's it, as far as I'm concerned.
And the financial problems associated with that are...
If we take no position, or we say we want the bridges down, I suspect the bridges come down or at least remain closed. If we say, as this motion says, that we want the bridges to stay up, we can have a longer conversation between the boards, between government agencies, where we talk about options. If we don't take this position, our options go away.
As somebody who attended that meeting, that joint Select Board meeting with the Hinsdale Select Board back in the day, the gentleman who came from the state of New Hampshire, as almost like a tick every three minutes, mentioned, "After we refurb those bridges, this thing is going to become a low priority. It will become a low priority. It will become a low priority," which means somebody's going to be saddled with the cost. Now, I'm just here to remind everybody, I appreciate your motion. I do. I don't like the fact that it puts our town manager and our staff in our town in this position that we have to try to say, "We know it's your property, but keep it open for us. It's not our bridge. It's just flat-out not our bridge." And you're talking to a bike guy.
Sure.
All right? But I am realistic in how I am trying to approach this. It is the state of New Hampshire's property, it is not our property. I feel as though that bridge is our property, we're the ones that look at it, we will reap should, through some miracle, this all works out, and everybody, all their visions come to fruition, we will be the ones that reap any reward while it still costs the town of Hinsdale money. So, I want your idea, but at the end of the day, it's just not our bridge. You can force job, put him in a headlock, drag him over to the town offices.
I don't really want to do that.
Yeah, I know you don't want to do that, but you're sort of putting down in a motion that we're going to step in that direction, or at least put him in this unenviable position to have very uncomfortable situations with a town, our neighboring town, a town that will continue to be our neighbor, that we've interacted well for so many years, and now this bridge is starting to become this little bit of a wedge that I, for one, don't appreciate treating my neighbor that way. I put a fence up in my yard, I gave my neighbor the nice side of the fence. That's just common courtesy. But at the end of the day, I put my fence up because it was on my property. The common courtesy is this bridge and the problem, and the smaller police staff that they have, and answering these issues that we're kind of crossing over the bridge. So, I want all the things. I want a bridge of flowers, I want a bridge of lights, I want this clean thing where you can go out there and grab a sandwich and have a nice afternoon, but it would be like me doing that every day on my neighbor's deck.
I'd love to say something, unless you want to, Isaac. So, what I care about, and what I was elected for to be on the Select Board, I think, is economic development. I see incredible potential for economic development for the state of New Hampshire and the town of Hinsdale. You have George's Field Development Area. You also have someone who's intending on building over 100 condos that I'm sure you're connected with, Mr. Paul Bellegor. I don't know much about that project, but when I think about the future, future orientation, future economic development, future tax revenue for the town of Brattleboro, the town of Hinsdale, these are real possibilities. I hear the concerns that are immediate, and they're dire, and they're stressful, and we'd like to help, but we'd also like to envision with you a future that could be mutually, economically beneficial. So I just want to throw that out there, because that's something I feel very strongly about, and I hear the concerns of the board as well. I don't think it's prudent to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We want to work with you to help this problem, our problems, but also know that we have two great communities. We are in a great region of the United States of America, and let's work together. Okay? Thank you.
Isaac, did you want to say something?
I think we should vote on the motion.
Can I ask before you vote a question? Is there a precedent in a state for Vermont to buy a town, a municipality to buy a parcel of property from another state, whether it be from New Hampshire, or we border New York State, we border Massachusetts? Is there any precedent that allows a municipality to purchase property in another state? Because there are implications to that.
And I should defer... Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jim. Let's ask Bob, but I have heard the word "Act of Congress" bandied about.
I'm not sure about that. There was, didn't Killington try to buy property in New Hampshire at one point? But I would have to research the ability of a Vermont town to purchase property in another state, let alone have it seeded or transferred to Vermont would take an Act of Congress. But as far as ownership, I would have to research.
And...
Do we have to pay taxes on it?
Yes, and of course, the fiscal conservatives on this board are singing a different tune.
And of course, this motion has nothing, makes no mention of purchasing from another state or anything like that.
But that is the question that Hinsdale has brought to the table, and of course, you're not really answering it.
I also do know that this issue has been brought to the attention of our Senator Peter Things might not be as difficult as we might think they would be. And that would be a great story for Hinsdale and for Brattleboro.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Oscar has made a motion. Shall I read it? Oscar moves that Brattleboro affirm as its official position that Charles Dana and Anna Hunt Marsh Bridges be restored and kept open for pedestrian and bicycle access as described in the Hinsdale Bridge Project Plan, Grant Applications, and Interstate Agreements. He further moves to direct the town manager and staff to advocate for that position with the town of Hinsdale, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and any other relevant entities, to advocate for continued pedestrian and bicycle access across both bridges, and to reopen discussions with the Hinsdale Select Board about a mutually satisfactory resolution to the Hinsdale Bridge Project. All those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That's three. All those in favor say no.
No.
Opposed.
Opposed. No. That's me. Peter?
Stained.
And Peter abstains. There you have it. I thank you very much for coming this way and listening to us, and late at night. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Let's see. Property tax rate, FY26 property tax rate? John, do you want to discuss that?
Yep, so the property tax rate necessary to fund the budget that was approved at town meeting on May 27th has been calculated, and it would be $1.5835 per $100 of assessed value, as well as .1301 for the downtown improvement district, and a 4.0573 for the mountain home special assessment district. These rates are all calculated and provided in your backup materials. The state of Vermont has also established the following property tax rates for education: homestead $1.8991 and non-residential $1.7539, which, for example, on the homestead side with the municipal tax would result in a rate of 3.4826, which is a 2.7% increase. It was mentioned earlier that there was a 12% increase. It's actually a 2.7% increase on the tax rate from FY25 to FY26. And in your backup materials also is the impact of that on the, at homes valued from $100,000 to $300,000, and you can see what the increase is on each of those properties, whether it's homestead or non-residential. So we have a motion recommended for you to consider, and that is included in your memo, if someone would like to make it.
Great. Is someone like to make that memo, motion?
I will, I'd be happy to attempt it. Lots of numbers in here.
Yes.
Here we go. I motion to approve a municipal tax rate of $1.5835 per 100 of assessed valuation, which includes $1.5822 for the general fund operations, and .0013 for the local agreement, an additional .13001 per 100 of assessed valuation for the downtown improvement district, an additional $4.0573 per 100 of assessed valuation for the mountain home special assessment, and to ratify the state-mandated education rates of $1.8991 per 100 of assessed valuation for the homestead properties, and $1.7539 for 100 of the assessed valuation for non-residential properties.
Thank you, Peter. Is there any discussion?
I just, like, for people watching at home who are wondering why we're breezing through this, it's because these are just sort of, the numbers have to work out this way because of what we already agreed on, so there's not that much to debate.
These numbers are given to us by the state. Anyone else want to make a discussion?
Should we vote?
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute.
Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment? Randy?
I just had, I just had a question. So the number that was brought up at RTM and stuff was like five point something, so the state supplied more money that were down to two point something?
Yeah.
Just curious.
That's right.
Hi, Kate O'Connor. I just want to clarify, the state didn't provide more money. That's the education side of the taxes that brought it down, because they spent less.
Thank you. All right. Are we ready to vote? Ready to vote? I'll read it one more time. To approve a municipal tax rate of $1.5835 per $100 of assessed valuation, which includes $1.5822 for general fund operations, and $0.0013 for the local government, and, oh, for the local agreement, and an additional $0.1301 per $100 of assessed valuation for the downtown improvement district, an additional $4.0573 per $100 of assessed valuation for the mountain home special assessment, and to ratify the state-mandated education rates of $1.8991 per $100 of assessed valuation for homestead properties, and $1.7539 per $100 of assessed valuation for non-residential properties. All Select Board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That's five zero. Thank you. All right. Chapter 18, Article 2, Section 18-137, and Article 3, Division 2, ordinance changes?
Yep. This is first reading of water and sewer rates, and that's Dan Tyler. And Pete Lynch to come up.
Thank you, Dan. Pete's sitting this one out?
Yeah, Pete's going to sit this one out, I guess.
He's all, yep, yep. They'll have more activity.
So, first reading of the utility rate ordinance. Historically, we've brought you back an ordinance that has a five-year rate structure built into it. What we're proposing here is to do something similar to what we did with the parking ordinance and pull the rates out of the ordinance. So in the strikeouts, you'll see the different rate charts are struck out, and it says refer to a rate sheet. So then there would be a rate sheet that is developed, and that could be altered by the Select Board at any given point without going through the ordinance change. So, essentially, the ordinance change doesn't have any rates in it, wouldn't have any rates in it this year, if that's how you chose to go. We would need to come back with the second reading with a rate chart. The last time we talked about the utility budget, you adopted a budget based on expenses and revenues from a 7% water rate increase and a 3% sewer increase. At that time, there was discussion of whether we could adjust those rates so we weren't leveraging the historic sewer rates as much and increase the water rates. So, there's two alternatives here. One of them is what we talked about last time with the seven and the three on the water, and then 2% straight through on the sewer. And the other one was attempt to, you adopted a budget based on revenues and expenses, so I was trying to work the rate model to hit those numbers, and went back to the original recommendation of 9% increase on the water, but eliminated the increase on the sewer in the first year, 9% on the second year with a 1% on the sewer, and then the water would follow with threes and twos on the sewer. And we come out within $25,000 of the number that was adopted at... And we come out within twenty-five thousand dollars of the number that was adopted at the last meeting, and it, it kind of brings the equity back into that rate structure and reduces the estimated bills slightly, a couple dollars, so.
Um, just explain what you mean by equity, Dan.
Um, so there, there are thirty-two customers that are sewer-only accounts, so the original proposal was kind of leveraging the, the sewer, um, yeah, the historic sewer rates and the, and using that to kind of float the water until we got up to those levels where we need to be.
Thank you. All right. Um, that's it for now, Dan?
Yeah, I think.
Answer any questions people might have? Let's start with the Select Board. Select Board members have any questions they'd like to ask?
Not at this time.
I actually don't.
How about you gentlemen over here to my left?
I'm good.
Excellent. Do members of the public have comments that they would like to make about, uh, the water and sewer schedule? Mr. DeGray does.
Why not? I did appearance.
There must be a reason.
That's it. I do appreciate, uh, dropping the sewer rate, which is the higher rate of the two. Uh, because there's no flow meters for the septic, uh, it does have, uh, a huge impact, especially on larger families. So, uh, I appreciate your work on this, Dan, and I hope the board approves this. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
And this, this is just a first reading on this, and so, uh, we, you don't need to make a decision on that tonight. We'll bring it back for a second reading in next meeting.
Great.
Do we need a decision on the rate structure or?
You, we could, if, if, if that's helpful, if you want that now.
Or we could do it all at the second reading.
Yeah. It's up to you.
I think, um, people might want to absorb this and vote at the next chance.
Okay.
So, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Uh, what's next? Potential, uh, downtown restroom, police stations, substation bid?
Yep. Um, and so this is, uh, we've, uh, been, been directed to do, uh, this downtown restroom, police substation bid project, and a lot of work has happened on it. Invite, uh, Pete Lynch, Assistant DPW Director Pete Lynch, and Assistant Chief Jeremy Evans to the table to explain where we're at.
Great. Thanks for having us this afternoon, or this evening, I should say. So, along with Jeremy and I this evening also is our project manager, Steve Horton, and he'll be available on Zoom to answer any questions and to provide some data as we move along through the, through the walkthrough of the project. So, as, uh, just a brief history about what got us to tonight. Um, we were directed, um, by the Select Board, uh, in November to put together a project that would include public bathrooms and a substation for the police department at the transportation center. And that project would include, uh, three public bathrooms, one which would be ADA compliant, um, offices and meeting rooms for our BRAT team, uh, space for the community resource specialist, and, um, parking enforcement would also have a space at the transportation center. They're there now, they would move out during construction and then move right back in to be with the BRAT team and the community resource specialist. So, um, after the November meeting, uh, staff started working on what plans might look like for, specifically for that renovation, and, um, in March, uh, we sat back at the table with the Select Board, and you approved, um, a spending, um, up to seven hundred and seven thousand dollars, which would include, um, uh, thirteen thousand dollars to Robin Sweetapple for design of the space and HVAC, um, to Steve Horton for project management in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, electrical engineering in the amount of three thousand dollars, which left, uh, a construction estimate of about six hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. So during the months of April and May, uh, Steve, Robin, Jeremy, and I, uh, took some time to look at the project, um, to talk about what efficiencies we could find, to talk about, um, uh, creating spaces that used existing spaces that would reduce the cost of the, of the, uh, project, and creating a footprint, um, that might be reduced a little bit but still hold the same sort of programming that you expect of us and that would last years into the future. So during those meetings, we identified a spot, um, on the easternmost part of the transportation center, on the, on Flat Street, of course, and that abuts the alley, uh, and the Duett, uh, building. So that space is about twenty-seven hundred and fifty-six square feet, and, um, it encompasses most of that side of the building. So, uh, we went out to bid for a general contractor, and we received one bid from All Seasons Construction for six hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that name may be familiar to, familiar to you, All Seasons. All Seasons is the company that just worked at Memorial Park and built their, their maintenance shed for them. Our group agreed that six hundred and sixty-four dollars was, uh, six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, um, was within your approved budget, but we also thought that we had, that we could find some more efficiencies, um, in the project that would allow the, the numbers to be reduced a bit. So Steve Horton graciously went back to the table with All Seasons, and, um, they came up with some efficiencies, uh, a little bit of redesign that would bring the project price down to about five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the construction. And I know that Steve is on Zoom, and I'm hoping that he's willing to talk about a few of those efficiencies and cost savings, uh, for us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, the, we pursued, uh, many factors of potential cost savings, um, all of them commonsensical.
And I'll hear me okay, by the way. Great. Um, the primary focus was initially on the HVAC system. We found that the, uh, subcontract values of the HVAC system were, um, higher than one might expect. So we examined what we originally thought for the system and determined that if we changed the HVAC system by reusing part of the existing system in the CJIS part of the, uh, plan, and then switching to what we call split systems, heating and cooling units, self-contained heating and cooling units, we, we actually saved about, uh, fifty thousand dollars by doing that. The other consideration that we took was to eliminate one of the four bathrooms, and that value was determined at approximately ten thousand dollars. We changed light fixtures from one manufacturing company to another, and we saved, uh, approximately three thousand dollars. And then we looked at every component of the project, and, and the real savings comes in small pieces from there. And then finally, um, All Seasons was gracious to help us with some of the overhead costs that they had considered in their bid, and they provided a savings for that as well. We, we went, um, from, as Peter said, six hundred and, approximately six hundred and fifty-five thousand to five hundred and fifty-five thousand by doing that effort. Uh, we're not changing the program at all, and, um, we think the product, the end, the outcome of the, uh, this value engineering will provide the town with a, um, as Peter said, a, a, a building, a renovated building that will provide services as requested by the Select Board.
Great. Thank you. Uh, John, is there anything you want to add?
Nope. Um, just if you, oh, I, I guess, Pete, were you finished?
Just, just a few more things if I could. So, um, if we talk about the entire package, um, the design, engineering, and project management that we spoke about is about thirty-six thousand, uh, six hundred and fifty dollars. The construction itself would be fifty-five, uh, five hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Five hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Uh, and we put in a ten percent contingency of fifty-five, uh, thousand, five hundred dollars for a total project cost of six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. That's about a sixty thousand dollar savings from where we started, uh, maybe four or five months ago. Um, we're looking at a timeframe to start in the beginning of August, to move the BRAT team in pretty quickly, um, into a temporary space, move them into a permanent space in mid-October with final completion of the project somewhere in November. And while this project alone is, is exciting in itself, um, it seems to be the beginning of, of some revitalization for that building. You had asked us to make the building safer a few years ago. You had asked us to upgrade it. Um, people are starting to show interest in the building, spaces, um, and we hope to, uh, along with this project, come back to you with more, um, uh, renewal in the building and, and some lease options.
And, um, Assistant Chief Evans, are, you're available to answer questions about the programming here, or did, did you have anything to add to what Pete had?
Um, just to say that, uh, well, two things, yes, to answer any questions you have, obviously. Um, and to say that, uh, we've worked closely with, uh, DPW on this and, uh, feel like the final project that we've come forward with is going to be, uh, really good.
Great.
And I just, in closing, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm really impressed with the work that Pete and, uh, Steve have done to keep the cost down on this project and still, uh, meet the, meet the needs of the town.
Great. Okay. Um, anyone have any initial comments they'd like to make?
I would love to. Yeah. Um, I, I'm really excited for this project, um, and I'm excited that it's going to be happening soon. It's really great, and thank you. Um, I have a proposal for a tweak in the design that is, um, simple, um, for cost savings and for practicality. The three outdoor restrooms doors open to the outside. Um, I don't know what the story is with the heat on those, but I see them as highly impractical. Um, possible freezing in the winter, being propped open, um, and, uh, not a practical solution that will cost the town more money. So, um, I have a, a motion that is a little different from the one in our materials I would like to r- read in relation to that.
Sure.
And then I'll say a little bit more about justification. So my amended motion is to award the general construction of the transportation center public bathrooms and police substation renovation project to All Seasons Construction Corp. In the amount of up to five hundred and ten thousand dollars after value engineering the removal of the exterior access public restrooms, but keeping the interior one. So the publicly available bathroom would be in the inside of the building rather than the outside of the building. Um, I think this is a matter of conscience that for serving people who have needs in our community, that it's important that they interact with other human beings and that they're not, um, relegated to an exterior metal bathroom, um, which are, you know, really engineered for, um, I don't know how to, I'm gonna say it in plain language, really engineered for people to be engaged in behavior that's potentially very unhealthy. Um, not to mention the fact that they could be frozen solid in the winter if someone props them open. Um, they've been designed so that if one of the bathrooms got, um, unusable because of biohazards, it could be locked and cleaned up so other ones could be available, which to me speaks to the, just, just speaks to the lowest, um, common denominator of people's behavior. And so I think that, um, I'm proposing this, um, I'm sure people will have opinions on it, um, but I would prefer individuals to be able to go into that building to use the restroom, get to interact with the, um, with the BRAT team. The BRAT team's for everybody. So I'll leave it at that.
Very good. Um, anyone want to comment on that motion and the project?
Um, I, maybe, all right. Yeah, just a question, the, on, on the inside of the facility, should Amanda's motion succeed, what, what would the hours of the, uh, operation of the bathrooms be? Is that a twenty-four hour facility? Is that, uh, while people are in there, people can gain access to it? Um, is that gonna create a different set of problems, I guess?
John?
Do you want to start?
Sure.
Okay.
So, um, just right now, that, the atrium where the public bathrooms are, um, is open to a leased space for the mover. It would be open to the, uh, community resource specialist, and, um, a li- a fairly large open space would remain with a hallway that would be locked after that. Um, it would be our intent not to have that, those spaces open to the public twenty-four seven, um, but to only have them open during the hours that the business people were occupying those spaces. Um, we'd have to rethink how, how that would work if we had such a large area that was open twenty-four seven and, um, maybe put some redesigns in to allow for greater safety within that space.
I, I guess, just a point of clarification, I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily advocating that that interior, uh, thing be open twenty-four seven. I was just sort of curious about, like, the hours of operation now, which I think you've explained, and does that create any, any issues for the substation or for the leasur now if people were to kind of come in and, and need a bathroom?
Uh, we definitely would have to do some rethinking and redesigning on, uh, that space because we designed it with the understanding that it would be, um, those bathrooms would be for employee use, uh, so, uh, lockers and things like that that would have uniforms and people's equipment things are in that space. Uh, so we would have to rethink, uh, how to do that, how to put those, where else to put those, um, those kind of things.
I, I think it, oh, sorry. It just, um, when we had originally envisioned the substation and the BRAT team's use of it, it wasn't necessarily going to be a person sitting at a desk, and that your personnel would be in and out, and transportation people would be in and out. So, um, I, what I was envisioning was that it would be kind of like, um, uh, a nine-to-five kind of operation, the interior bathroom, and, um, you definitely have to do some work to kind of rethink that, but I wasn't expecting, um, someone to be present at the substation all the time, and certainly not even during the day. Is, is that what you were envisioning?
No, I, the same thing that you're describing is what I envisioned, um, and I, I just would remind the board that, um, those bathrooms are closed off right now to the public because of all of the problems we had with what was happening in those with overdoses and, um, debris that was being left in them and left unsafe, uh, and that's because we don't have staff right with those bathrooms, um, and that's not going to change. So, um, I see us re-inviting that same problem over again if we open them back up. I think that's why we were looking at the external, the bathrooms on the, on the outside.
Mm-hmm. Peter, did you want to say something?
Yeah. I would, I'd also caution Amanda that, um, the figures that you're using, um, would probably be okay if we were eliminating bathrooms, but if we had to retrofit the bathrooms that exist to make them safe for everybody at all times of the day, per, potentially, I think there would be some costs associated with that as well. So your, your proposed number may be a little low.
I think, I, I think I've, I think I sounded confusing, so I'm gonna just clarify some things, because, um, so my, so my thought is that you have roughed in plumbing for two restrooms already. This is just planned design, and you also know that they're not going to freeze in the winter. Um, and, um, could the plan possibly be tweaked, um, to create another bathroom that would be for that purpose? Um, that purpose? You know, it would be cooler in the summer, it would be warm in the winter in the vestibule space. And the idea of public restrooms is, it's important for public health, for sure. But I have concerns about who's going to be asked to clean those bathrooms in our town staff, and I worry about their morale. And I think we're setting ourselves up for added expense, things that get broken, things that freeze up, and a real downturn in morale for individuals who have to clean those spaces.
So Amanda, one could surmise that your motion might also include some, let's say it passed, and then let's say we ask our team to give us some ideas about a public restroom interior and how it could operate safely and with a minimum of maintenance.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
What do you think of that? Peter?
I'd like to query Steve Horton if I could to understand if it was, if we needed to come back to the board, which would probably be the first meeting in September at that point, how that would affect our contract with All Seasons and what that would mean for start dates for the project.
Although what I was anticipating was us to approve this contract tonight and that in the future you'll say, you know, we acted on Amanda's motion and tweaked it in A, B, and C way.
Very good.
That's my intention as well. Yeah. I hope to approve the contract.
And if that comes back as a lower cost, it might not.
I suspect it won't because in Amanda's initial thoughts were to eliminate all the bathrooms, and that was a cost of about $45,000. But if we're really talking about somehow removing a couple of the bathrooms and then turning the project so we still have, so that we're adding a bathroom or two, that's going to drive the cost back up. And therefore, I think as tight as this budget is, we might be in trouble if we dropped with a figure as low as what you're looking at. But I would refer to Steve, defer to Steve for that.
I'd like to hear from Steve. Yes.
Thank you.
I understand the direction we're headed in, and I might suggest that we ask you to amend the motion, Amanda, to go back to the $555,000 with the hope of finding, with the plan of finding space interior for these bathrooms, one or two or multiples, but some sort of notion that we not exceed the $555,000 total in that effort, but find some room inside for these bathrooms instead of outside.
Thank you for that suggestion. Yeah. I'd like to amend the motion.
Sure. And while you're writing that down, I was just querying this first existing toilet room. Is there a way that that could be the dedicated public restroom?
Seth, are you willing to put the layout from page 86 on the screen?
You know, there's two here.
So are you talking to about, to the far right, Liz, the Xed Out? Where the Xed Out section is? Are you talking about where the bathrooms exist currently?
I'm talking about the left one to the hallway or the right one of the two existing.
To make one public and one private?
One public and one private.
Understand. I definitely think it's worth us going back to look at it with Steve.
Great. But then, but I would hope that in the meantime, right now, we could amend a motion and vote on it.
Could, just to make sure we're, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So the exterior bathrooms we had talked about, the hope was for those to be open 24/7, as long as there weren't any issues with them. Placing one inside the lobby, I think is going to make, that would make that very difficult, if not impossible, task to achieve to have it open for those hours. So it would be limited to the hours that we have staff at the facility.
Yes.
As long as we're all on the same page with that.
Completely on the same page with that.
We're not all on the same page about that, just to be clear. Well, at least we all know what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Anyone want to talk further about that?
Do you want me to restate the motion first before we talk about it?
Yes.
Okay, so I move to award the general construction of the Transportation Center public bathrooms and police substation renovation project to All Seasons Construction Corp. in the amount, in the amount not to exceed $550,000 after value engineering the removal of the exterior access public restrooms, but keeping the interior one. Is that clear? Okay.
Okay. Who on the select board would like to speak to that? Isaac?
So thank you so much for the work that you have already done on this, Assistant Chief Evans and Assistant Director Lynch and Steve Horton. Appreciate the thought that you've put into this and already the work that you've done to look at cost savings. To Amanda's point around the bathrooms, my understanding is that part of the idea of this was to provide access to public bathrooms for members of the public to make easy access, including for people who are unhoused. And that I would hope that any discussions of changing from this, this plan will actually really discussions about bathroom access be actively incorporating people who are already providing bathroom access to people who are unhoused. I'm thinking of folks from Groundworks, I'm thinking about the library, which has public bathrooms. I think that it would be really important to be soliciting their input in making determinations about whether this is interior or exterior and addressing some of the concerns around monitoring of bathrooms and the staffing and what would be required to keep them safe. But taking a step back, I think it's important for us to look at the financial context which we're making this decision in. We're currently facing some significant financial challenges that we weren't a year ago. We're just experienced this double-digit property, municipal property tax increase. We have seen a depletion of our reserves, and there are ongoing concerns about infrastructure costs, like our roads and core services. We've been in the planning phase for this project for, my understanding is about a year, and in that time, we've seen some changes. We've hired the Brattleboro Resource Assistance Team and three new additional police officers. And I would say that it's important for us to reassess major expenses in the context of the current realities and the financial picture. I would ask that our select board consider looking at this proposal as part of the FY27 budget planning process this fall, when we have a full financial picture. We're going to have more information at that point and can look at this in terms of what is it going to be the cost to our taxpayers. The board agreed in a unanimous vote this spring that we would support long-term capital planning and building back our financial reserves. So now is the time for us to make good on that decision and actually look at all of what we want to do altogether and what the impact of these decisions will be. That's something that didn't happen last fall when this downtown safety action plan was put together, is it was done without a full look at the bigger picture of what the expenses were. And I think we saw in the fact that the budget was voted down, we saw the town's response to that. And so I'd like to set us up for success and to do that in, to look at everything together. Thank you.
So Isaac, I think it's important to note that the money that is funding this project is not taxpayer dollars. It is revolving loan funds.
So just to clarify, my concern is on the impact on taxpayers. So if we've made a commitment that we are going to restore our reserve funds and go for a 10% of our annual budget would be in reserves, and we're far below that, and in order to work towards that, we're going to have to put in hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that's going to come from somewhere. And, you know, that could come from taxpayers by taxing people more, or it could come from, you know, potentially it could come from this sum of money. The point is that Brattleboro resident, this is money that's available to us, and it's going to have, you know, it could be used for any number of things, but it's our money and as a town, and there will be a financial impact on us if we spend this.
Well, I don't agree because I just think that the revolving loan fund is separate and apart from our municipal finances, from the general fund and from the taxpayer dollars. So also, it's a decision that was previously made and consistent with the downtown safety action plan, which I believe we all support. So this is a necessary function of the BRAT team and police department and the resource specialists and all the good things that are part of the downtown safety action plan. And not only that, it allows for particular reuse of the transportation center, including the potential for existing renting. Oscar, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. I think this is a, this subject is something we've talked about a great deal over the past 12 months, so I'm going to just, in plain language, lay out why I don't, first, let me say, I really am, I understand that we're coming into a process that's already underway, and I really am incredibly appreciative of the work that's gone into it. And I know that to make any change at this point would be to discard some excellent work, and I really am sensitive to that. The few reasons why I hope that we won't award this bid and that we will instead pick this up, this discussion up again, let's say in 12 months, are as follows. I think we faced serious budget troubles. I think that really our, the only thing I consider as a financial strength in Brattleboro is that we happen to have some cash on hand. I think that the equivalence of cash on hand to taxes is direct and that at any given moment, we can fund a capital expense with cash on hand. And that when we spend a resource from one account, it's not any different from spending taxpayer money or something else. So I think we need to consider all the money we spend in that context. It can be very tempting and appealing to look at a problem and say, great, let's make this big investment. But I think we have to take the bigger view. And I also want to say that we've spent a really large amount of money on the other, let's say, phase one of the downtown safety action plan in the last 12 months, and we've seen the difficulties that it's put us in. So I've heard nothing from people downtown but that the changes we've made are working, that things are getting better. I think we have an opportunity to look at this again in a year and possibly save the town $600,000. And finally, the thing that, when the, when the police station was moved out of downtown, there were plenty of people saying, oh, no, you're leaving downtown behind. Please don't move the station out of downtown. It will cause problems. And what the department said at the time was, don't worry about it. Our vehicles are outfitted as mobile command and control vehicles. We don't, that's not going to happen. That's not going to be a necessity. And now we are not that many years down the road from that, and we're being faced with spending $600,000 on a satellite station downtown. So I know this is an emotional and important topic for people, and I'm looking sort of down at an angle to avoid some death stares that I'm sure I'm getting from the audience. But I think the prudent thing to do on this is wait and see if in a year we feel we desperately need it.
Speak to that?
Please.
How, Jeremy, how long ago did the PD move from here to Black Mountain Road?
2017, I believe.
2017?
Yeah.
So before COVID?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I think we've, with a reoccurring thread in all these conversations is how much COVID has changed the landscape of what we deal with on a day-to-day basis. We're in a different point in time right now. So the case they made for moving the department from here, other than the immediate safety concerns to our officers operating out of this building, were sound, good decisions, and I will defend those. We are now in a different time and place where people are making drugs in bathtubs and getting people hooked on one hit, and we are living in a completely different world right now. So having downtown substation is a critical part to the downtown safety action plan. I won't waver from that. I sat in this room and listened to hundreds of my constituents over and over again, and I have said this over and over again, as hot as the temperature was during those conversations, if this thing cost $3 million and we could have built it in a week right then, we would have done it. So you can, you can nod your head, but that's, this is not anything you're going to find in a spreadsheet. You're putting a price on public safety, and that's really what you're doing. So the fact that we have came, we have pared this thing down from a million and a half dollars to $700,000 to $555,000, and we're still able to feel good and function with it, I think speaks to the work that we've done in recognizing some fiscal responsibility here, but overall, not putting a price tag on the safety of the residents of Brattleboro.
Thank you, Peter. And once again, just from a land use perspective, I've been advocating for this substation for many years because I think that we, we got ourselves in a bind with the Transportation Center and the land uses along Flat Street. And what we need is this police presence. And it's, it's integral part of the downtown safety action plan. And again, it is not taxpayer dollars. It is not part of the general fund. It is the revolving loan fund. And that was part and parcel of the decision when it was originally made. This is something that can be, this is the reuse of an existing building, and the cost to outfit and the time spent is a matter of months. Peter, you intend to be completed by November, correct?
That's true. We hope to be fully completed mid-November.
So waiting is, I don't think waiting serves any value at all. And letting the police department, the BRAT team, the resource officers, all those good things function as the chief has intended is only a good thing for our town, is invaluable, and is not costing the taxpayers a dime.
I'd love to say something. I completely agree with you, Liz. Thank you, Chief Hardy. Thank you, Assistant Chief Evans, for your work and your planning and your strategic work with our town. This particular corridor with children in our community, both from, walking from NEYT to Main Street and the Boys and Girls Club location, is a particularly vulnerable one and important to nourish and protect and care for because that is our future. And those are amazing things we have in our community. We want our youth to participate in them. We want families to feel comfortable, and this is one step towards that. And, yeah.
Thank you. Ivan, you want to speak?
Ivan Hennessy, District Eight. It was a huge relief to hear that there was an actual plan for public restrooms in this town. For years, people have talked about difficult For years, people have talked about difficulty with the transportation center, difficulty centering around the lack of public restrooms. That said, that's the only part of this plan that has any value. This is money that is a revolving loan fund. It could be used for anything. It doesn't need to be used for the bottomless pit that is policing because there will always be a call for more spending on policing. It doesn't matter how successful this is, by what metric. Someone will ask for two more officers, a different vehicle, specialized training. The amount that can be spent on policing is infinite. But we could be spending it on stuff like bathrooms, cleaning those bathrooms so that all of these concerns that people raise about, well, what if people use it wrong? People could be using drugs in there. Yes. And that's something that can be cleaned up. It's an unpleasant, ugly thing that there are people in our community who are doing things that we find abhorrent and unpleasant. But the war on drugs has been going on for what, 50 years? We know what more policing does. It doesn't end the war on drugs. It puts people in prison. Thank you.
Mr. DeGray?
When the transportation center was built 25 years ago, the, one of the selling points was it would have public bathrooms. I had a store on Main Street, and people would come in and say, do you have public bathrooms? And you say, yeah, you got to cross the street, you got to go down five flights of stairs, and then the bathrooms are down on Flat Street. When I look at this mausoleum here, I would remind you, three of you didn't vote, vote for the safety action plan. You got elected in March, and you're not committed to this plan here. And I don't support this plan. I support the BRAT team, which is doing an excellent job. I think, Peter, you mentioned that they're doing an excellent job. And they're working out of the municipal building, and that's an adequate space. We think if we put an office down there, which actually has a shower in there, why can somebody tell me why we have a shower in there? And then we have the CJIS. Not one of you asked what that is or what that acronym stands for, and why is that there? That's the biggest space that we have. Does the BRAT team need that kind of a space? This is an overblown mausoleum, and you know what, Liz? It is not taxpayer dollars, but the revolving loan fund saves taxpayers money on other projects that would be done. We are benefiting greatly from the feet, from the feet on the street right now, and putting somebody in an office is not doing the job of having feet on the street. You have to get that in your head. Just because someone's in an office, if you think that's stopping any activity on any street, anywhere, you're sadly mistaken. And the people on the street, if they're not on Flat Street, then they're going to be on Elliott Street. If they're not on Elliott Street, they'll be on Main Street. They're a moving target. They've been moving for years and years and years. And so you want to spend $650,000, and you think you're going to get protection, and this is going to be the end-all, be-all. You're sadly mistaken. You have a facility in this building that is working well, and the BRAT team is working well out of here, and now you're going to build this. The three new people that ran for the board ran on fiscal responsibility. I would urge you to not support this plan. And if you want to revisit it, but right now, the BRAT team's doing what it's supposed to do, have the courage to say, no, I'm not going to support this. That doesn't mean you're not supporting the police department. That means you're showing the taxpayers that we don't need to put this facility in there. This is overblown, way overblown. You should do this project, if you're going to do it, for two-thirds less of what the cost is. There's all this stuff in here that doesn't need to be in here. And would you answer my question about the CJIS and why that's such a big space in here? And the shower room? Thank you.
Assistant Chief Evans, could you talk a little more about the way the BRAT team operates? And I would imagine that there would be a need for shower because of incidents that have occurred. And just talk a little bit about how you envision the BRAT team and the police department to work out of that space.
Sure. Really, simply, to simply answer Dick's two questions, the CGIS area is the criminal justice information services area. In order to have certain systems access through the state and through the federal government, we have to have secure location for those systems to be accessed. We have the exact same thing at the police department. So there has to be an area where, that has restricted access only to people that are certified and allowed to be where those things are. So that would be where people could access systems that have criminal justice information, so like people's criminal records, driving records, things like that. Those things aren't something that just anyone can get access to. So we have to have a space that is designed specifically for that. So it is just like an office area, but that's what it's called. And the shower is exactly, as you said, we deal with a lot of unpleasant situations. We use the showers at the police department on a regular basis for people to clean up before they go home or after incidents. That's a common occurrence. That's why we have the showers available, and expect that to be used there as well.
Do the showers go to the restroom?
I don't know. I wouldn't be able to answer that for you.
Okay. Seth, who we got?
We got Marta.
Okay.
Yeah. Quick comment about this, you know, about the bathrooms. People complain about the waste in town, like, but that's always going to be inevitable if we don't have bathrooms publicly available. And, you know, when you have bathrooms publicly available, you do have people to clean it. That's just kind of the, the way the world works. So I really am against moving those bathrooms so they wouldn't be accessible when people need it because you're either going to clean it off the sidewalk or parts of town, or you're going to clean a bathroom. It's kind of six of one, half dozen of another. My understanding is the BRAT team is currently working out of a substation in Municipal Center, which we spent about $85,000 on. And I would like to hear why that couldn't be continued for another year. You know, people have said it, downtown is so much better. When you talk to people, they were like, as soon as the new officers were hired, pretty much everyone downtown just was like, it's so much better, it's so much better. But that was before any of the new hires were even on the street or through the, the academy. So I think we also have like kind of a perception issue. I kind of agree with Dick that, you know, issues are going to move around, but people already said it was just so much improved, 100% improved. They didn't even realize that we're not utilizing, at that point, we hadn't had all of the benefits of all the new hires. But my biggest concern is the more space in the transportation center that can be used for leaseholders that pay in money rather than taxpayer money, the more money goes into the parking fund. Because as I understand it, the revenue from those leases were supposed to be part of the parking fund, which is, you know, lagging these days, and we had to put some, you know, recapitalize some of it. And I just understand that the parking fund is supposed to be an enterprise fund. It's like not in the budget because it's supposed to be self-supporting. And so by using space in that center that could be used for rent for leaseholders, it seems like that would maybe end up with the parking fund no longer being the kind of fund it is and being funded by the taxpayers again. And if you could clarify that, that would be great.
Great. John, maybe you want to talk a little bit about the fact that actually, I believe that through this development, it, it allows for a greater confidence and greater marketability of the remaining spaces.
Yeah, I think since the, since we've been working on this police substation, there's been a lot more interest from potential tenants to lease in this area. So I think that actually completing this project would help the bottom line of the parking fund.
Great. Mr. Belknap?
Timothy Belknap, number nine. This substation is an investment in the future of this town, and I think we need to really think about that. If we don't have a safe downtown, what do we have if we don't have a safe town? And another thing is, I really want to see the statistics that the police have as far as what they've actually accomplished, which is a lot, okay, over these past six months. And I'd like to see those front and center for everyone to actually see because that's super impressive. So kudos to the entire team there, and let's invest in the future of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, do you want to comment on any milestones associated with the BRAT team and downtown safety action plan?
I didn't come with any prepared remarks for any specific stuff. I'd be happy to, I don't, I just don't, I don't want to wing a data presentation.
Okay.
I'd be happy to come back to a subboard meeting in the near future and do that.
And we'd be happy to invite you.
Okay.
I don't know that woman's name, so.
Dory?
That's Lindsey. The same person.
Lindsey?
Hi, sorry, I'm with my partner, Lindsey Dory Hamm, resident of Brattleboro. I am one of the residents, when you guys talk about residents downtown, I live on Main Street. I walk Flat Street every day to my car and to the New England Theatre where I work. I just always want to make sure, like, I, I will say that I see there's always a cop car parked on Flat Street every day. I see the, the new, like, walking patrols. It just, I just don't think we need this. It seems like such a waste of money that could go to other things. I also want to say how insanely proud I am of Brattleboro, and thank you all so much for fighting to protect our bridge and support the history and all the wonderful things that happen in this town. You know, Brattleboro has got such a bad rap, and it there's, it's an incredible frickin' town. There's so many nonprofits that do wonderful things. There's so much homeless support. There's so much drug support for so many people suffering. So it's like Brattleboro gets a bad rap for doing so much good, and I just always take that personally because I really love this town. I walk Flat Street every day, and I just don't think we really need this. Thank you.
Okay, let's have Susan now, and that's it.
Susan Bellville, District Eight, property manager for properties on Elliott Street in Brattleboro. I spend a lot of time downtown, and I interact with BRAT officers almost every day, as well as the police officer who's often on Flat Street. I often seek him out to give him information about state, things that I observe and incidences that I think the police department needs to know about. I interact with the BRAT team in order to put them, make them aware that there's a particular individual that is acting in a strange manner, and that the store owners that are getting ready to close up, I'd like, I'd appreciate it if they'd be around just to keep an eye out so that this female who is going to be exiting this business at the end of the workday has a safe trip to her vehicle so she can leave safely. I have been approached repeatedly by people that are asking for money or asking for rides or asking for cigarettes, and there are some that I say, oh, yeah, let's have a conversation. Let's talk about where you are today. And then there are others who I'll say, get away from me, get away from my vehicle. I don't want to have to call the police on you. And we need the substation in the worst way possible so that there, there is a visible presence on Flat Street that helps those people down there around the transportation center that can encourage new businesses to take rental space in that transportation center that's necessary. And that I feel that there's someone less than 10 minutes away who can help out people in the whole of downtown Brattleboro. When the substation or the station in west, in, up on Putney Road was proposed, I don't know if you recall, the reason why that had to happen was because, A, there was no space downtown Brattleboro that could accommodate the police department and the necessary items that needed to be incorporated into that space, and B, it was an unhealthy environment. The basement is unhealthy. This building is not considered adequate space. I sat through numerous meetings where they talked about how unhealthy this building is. So we can't, it's unfair to hire, have staff here that is living in a hostile, unsafe environment or working here. I'm sorry, not living here. Sometimes it feels like it, but working in a, in an unsafe environment. So please support the substation and the public bathroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Now?
Now Mayo, District Eight. I think between Mr. DeGray and Ms. Bellville's arguments there, there's the difference that I don't think Dick is advocating for the entire police staff, right? There wasn't space here for that. He's advocating for the, the smaller BRAT team to remain in the seating on the first floor. This is, I don't know, but I believe they don't have to be in the basement. That said, that was just a reaction I had there. My questions were, again, largely surrounding the parking fund. I was looking a bit at this, so if, if what's advertised is 8,000 square feet of commercial space, this is taking up like 7, 2750. So it leaves you, it leaves you around like 5,200. And I was not clear on if the mover is an additional, like, retraction from that available space in the offices. Essentially, my question was, if we're looking at the parking fund and the actuals having like a $240,000 deficit right now, a lot of that, I saw like 70K from parking permits. I saw 240 or something from, like, less, less than expected revenue in meters. And I saw that the, I assume Brattleboro TC Rent is the transportation center, budgeted at 10K. We're looking at 5K in actuals. My impression was also like, yes, people believe that the ordinances we're, we're bringing in might increase the meter revenue. I assume that a part, a lot of this proposed investment in the transportation center is, like you said, it's a retrofit. You think it'll bring in better leaseholders. Is that going to be enough to support the parking fund? Will there have to be increased rent prices on those spaces to account for the amount of space that can't be rented out? And then I do also feel it's an administrative contradiction. I don't know if there is rent going into the parking fund from the proposed substation, but if it is, that's taxpayer money. So I just, I believe that's an administrative contradiction. I thought the whole point of the enterprise funds is that they're not funded by the taxpayers and they stand on their own. I was also wondering if this goes forward, what happens to the municipal seating for the BRAT here? And I do, I agree with the sentiment that's been put forward by Oscar, by other people tonight, that the revolving loan fund money, it's not general fund, but it has been used for other improvements across town. It came from U-DAG money, which came, which was put forward by HUD, which was urban housing and urban development, correct? And when I was looking at the revolving loan fund expenditures from the last finance committee report, the majority of them were for housing projects. I believe there is a, perhaps a larger impact that money could have.
Thank you. All right. Let's just hear Jackie, and that's it. Hi, Jackie.
Hi, Jackie Reese, District Nine.
I just want to make two points. Someone-
Someone mentioned that the downtown area is considered to be so much better now. I have to agree with that. I live in the area and I work in the area. But it is better now because the police department is more fully staffed than before. It's still, it's still a major problem downtown. There's still many, many people that are uncomfortable. And I worked, like I said, I worked downtown. I walked down Flat Street to get from my job to my, to my car late at night, 10:00 PM. And I am not a young white guy. I'm an old white lady. It's much less, it's much less comfortable for me than it is for a guy. So I think that the closer the BRAT team is to the problem, the better. The easier it'll be for this problem to be solved more quickly. And it's not a police situation with the BRAT team. These are people who are trained to provide access to services. It makes total sense to me to have this down in the heart of the problem, to have the, these very friendly people working with people to help them get services. That's the whole purpose of the BRAT team, lest we forget. And so I think that this is an excellent solution, and it is going to make it so that it's more likely that we'll be able to also help with keeping the, the bridge open. I'm all for keeping the bridges open. I think it's a great idea. I'd love access to that island, as I think all of us would. Thank you.
Okay. Board, are we ready to vote?
I have one very specific, non-big, controversial debate question. Do you mind if I?
Go right ahead.
I just want to gut check about the interior bathrooms, particularly Amanda. I'm worried that if they're not 24/7, they don't really get to the worst of the problem. Like, I feel like during business hours, people can go to the library, people can go to different places. And I feel like if we're committing to bathrooms that aren't open overnight, that's not really going to help with when people are actually going to the bathroom outdoors.
Yes.
So, but you think that's all right as a?
Well, I hear your concerns, and I also know that staffing and hours of that facility is a police operations management issue, which is under the purview of John. And our select board does have the ability to, you know, ask if that's the case, if that can happen. I also really sincerely believe that there are community agencies in our downtown that also could, you know, provide that opportunity for individuals that would not be our municipal government paying for a 24-hour bathroom. Because, for example, Groundworks, their mission is to serve the unhoused. And if they had a 24-hour bathroom, well, that would be a great asset to our town. And we would certainly love to collaborate with that, but it's not, I feel like I want to provide, you know, a public access bathroom. It's up to operations to decide what hours of those were, are. I actually think those exterior bathrooms with doors that open out and lock if they get really dirty are actually like, they are not, I don't think they're fair to the people that would be using them.
I totally get that.
I think they're like, it's like segregation. It's like, you can use the outdoor bathrooms, but other people can use the indoor bathrooms. No, the indoor bathrooms are for everyone. The BRAT team is for everyone. Like, we're trying to help people nurture relationships, help people get better. And I don't see those exterior bathrooms as paving the way to do that.
Just wanted to bring it up.
John, did you want to say something?
I just had a clarification question on Amanda's motion. And I wasn't sure if you said not to exceed 555,000 or 550,000.
Well, I can say either.
The, what I thought I heard Pete saying, or Steve, maybe it was Steve, that if, if they could work within 555,000, that they think they could do what you were looking for.
That's what I wrote on the motion. It might not have sounded clear out of my mouth, but I can repeat the motion. Okay.
Isaac?
I do have one question about that, though. Does that mean that we don't have to pay that contingency, 55,500 dollars?
Is whatever. Contingency is.
For like change orders and stuff like that?
In the life of the project.
Are we worried that that's actually just a built-in cost that's going to be used up?
So contingencies would be the responsibility of the town of Brattleboro. The 555,000 would be the contractor's money. So Steve Horton and the town would decide what amount of that 55,000 would actually be spent, and it would not be obligated to the contractor.
I see.
So if we realized that there was some major problem when we opened up a wall, we would have contingency to be able to not go over budget and take care of the issue that we found.
But our goal would be not to spend that. That is true.
Does the board have to approve change orders, was Mr. DeGray's comment from his seat?
Isaac, did you have a question?
I had a comment. So first of all, in terms of community agencies, what I'm seeing is that they're stretched really thin right now. And there's challenges from the state, from state policy, from the federal government. And this is a time when the town has been asked to step up, and this has been part of the plan. But stepping back a minute, what I've been hearing from folks who really want to see this downtown substation is that there's a desire for more police presence on Flat Street, that there is a desire for proximity to police and also visibility of the police. And if the goal is police presence in public restrooms, I wonder if there are less expensive ways that we can achieve this. For instance, the patrols, I got to do a walk, a ride-along, and part of the daily routine was walking through by the abandoned buildings there across from the transportation center, checking in on people. We heard Dory, who went to BUHS, and me talk about the cruiser parked right there on Flat Street. I'm curious about like a walk-in counter, like where people can walk in with real big signage of the police department having a presence there. If the desire is the presence of police and the, then wouldn't that achieve as much? Because when I hear that, oh, well, the station's actually not going to be open 24 hours, you know, I'm thinking at 10 o'clock at night, is the police station, a closed police station, really going to achieve, achieve that safety or that feeling of safety? And are there other ways that are less expensive? So I've suggested that we look at this whole project in the context of the budget, FY '27, in the fall. Oscar's suggested that we put this off a year. But I also heard folks want to move forward sooner. And so what I wanted to suggest is a compromise, which is for us to, to look at less, even less expensive paths, scaled down, multiple scaled-down options. One could include exterior restroom access, one that removes or reduces exterior restroom access. But for us to be able to see other versions of this that would be, look quite a bit different, that wouldn't necessarily include all of the elements that are currently in the plan, that could leave the BRAT team stationed in this building. And, but if we could look at that, that, some options at, say, our next select board meeting. And interested to hear if there's, would be openness to that.
Thank you for your comment. I think Peter mentioned that this proposal has been significantly reduced in scope and price over the past six months to a year. What would the start add us?
1.4.
1.4 million dollars, and now it's 555,000 dollars. So let's vote, shall we?
Just a clarification, Liz, I had seen the, the, the select board November 12 approved an expenditure not to exceed 707,000.
And previously, it was much more. We got rid of a considerable amount of meeting space and, you know, sharpened our pencils. So that's where we are. Are we ready to vote?
I am.
Sure.
All right. Amanda, are you ready to read your motion or?
Yes.
I guess I can do that. I can do that.
You want to do that, Chair? Okay, I can pass you my notes.
To award the general construction of the transportation center public bathrooms and police station renovation project to All Seasons Construction Corp. in the amount of not to exceed 555,000 dollars after value engineering to
The removal?
The removal of the three, of the exterior.
Access.
Access public restrooms, but keeping the interior one. That's fine. All select board members in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's three. All select board members not in favor of that motion, please raise your hand.
No.
That's two, and the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a quick question? Did you just reduce the project by 55,000 dollars? Because you said not to exceed 555,000. So you just reduced your contingency, didn't you?
This is just the bid.
This was just the award to the contractor for 555,000.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, let's, let's decide, select board,
to postpone the monthly FY budget update and the emergency management for heat discussion to our next meeting, shall we? Because of the lateness of the hour.
Should we, is it possible, Madam Chair or Woman, to do the emergency management for heat issue? Get that, because it might get cold, it might get cold in two weeks.
Maybe a few hot days left.
We should have that discussion and save that.
I would be happy to try and have a 10-minute discussion, just because every two weeks of summer that go by, it just gets a little less.
Colder.
Relevant. But could we just, if anyone, is there anyone in the audience who will be devastated if we put off the financial plan for two weeks?
I suggest that no one would be devastated.
I'm not, I mean.
Can I take just one comment? The only reason I say was, we just need more information in the footnotes, what's cash and what's cruel. Big improvement over what we had before, but we need more information. So when you come back, if that could be in there and updated, it'd be awesome.
And that is in there, that is stated in the notes.
It still doesn't have a lot of what's cash and what's cruel.
Yeah, it does. It's.
Was it updated since Thursday?
It's not at the line item level, Randy. I know what you mean.
This is us not ignoring this topic?
Why don't, what, Randy, have a discussion with John.
Oh, it's fine. That was my point of saying.
Okay. All right. Okay. So then do we have at least three head nods to move the monthly budget update to our next meeting, which is July?
The 22nd, I think.
Yes, I moved to postpone it for the minute. It's helpful, I think, to have motions and.
I'm happy to, I vote yes.
Very good. Okay, emergency management for heat. We have Jay and Carol.
Yep.
Or Fire Chief Jay Simons and Recreation and Parks Director Carol LaLotte.
Without her scooter.
Yeah, with no, no belt on.
I'm happy to see Carol on her two feet.
Thank you for staying.
Yes.
Okay. Please begin.
Well, we're here this evening in response to the email that we, that you all received from Pam Corbett from the Department of, for the Vermont Health Department regarding extreme heat. And I'm going to actually let the chief start first with mitigation of high temps, and then I'll go into the later request in her email.
Okay, so from the emergency management standpoint, we obviously had about three heat advisories already this year. So, you know, as the department heads got together and talked about ways to mitigate those, those heat emergencies, two of the ones that were readily available were Brooks Memorial Library during their normal operating hours, and then the senior center during normal operating hours. We continue to put out notices during those heat advisories, just, you know, seek shade, stay off pavement because pavement radiates that heat and is a hotter area to be. Drink plenty of water and signs and symptoms to look out for when you become heat exhausted or go into heat stroke. Beyond those, those two cooling centers, you know, the fire department, our bays are not air-conditioned. So we have a small meeting space, but there's no way to kind of maintain that as a shelter. If the heat rises and those resources become overwhelmed, we reach out to Red Cross for additional resources beyond that. Now, Carol, talk about the pool.
Before you talk about the pool, I just want to mention that in my urban planning experience and my family life, it's clear to me that the major concern in heat emergencies is the elderly. And it's incumbent upon us as a municipality to make sure that when we're notifying people of the heat advisory, we make sure that they are looking after their neighbors and especially the elderly. And there have been studies that show, for example, New York didn't have cooling centers and Chicago did. And Chicago saved a tremendous amount of life because of that. So, you know, our goal is to provide these heat centers. And the, the senior center is a great example because what we really should be doing is making sure that the elderly are cared for. I know that elderly people like to sit in the heat and not put their air conditioners on because they're just fine deer, right? So it's incumbent upon all of us to look out for our neighbors and especially if they're elderly. So I just think that needs to be an important part of your messaging to make sure that the age group that is appropriate to be notified is included.
Absolutely.
Carol?
So further in the email from Pam Corbett, she was asking the town to take a look at the idea of having free admission to the pool on those very high heat index days. And I'm here to discuss that with you this evening. I first want to let you know some of the things that we're already doing and some of the agencies that we're already working with so that you have a foundation to make your decision later on as we have this conversation. The Recreation and Parks Department, since COVID, kind of moved away from season passes. And when, it would, it just became a little bit unmanageable, you know? It did us, you know, people would come in and it's like, is everybody? We were having to be put into judge and jury. Do you have 12 people in your family? So we went to punch passes. And when we went to punch passes, I started reaching out to the, you know, Wyndham Windsor Trust and the Housing Authority and HCRS. And we've talked about ways that we could make this happen and still reach out to the families to utilize the pool. So we came up with this voucher system. So usually every year, February, March, I reach out to those agencies or they're reaching out to me, and we come up with a voucher system. So, and I don't decide whose hands those go into. Each of those agencies decide whose hands those go into. But I can tell you that we probably get a stack daily, no matter what the temperature is, whether we hit the high heat index or not. And at the end of the season, we invoice each of those agencies. So the vouchers come in and it's. So the vouchers come in, and it's good for a one-day pass, and it has their logo on it. And that, as I tell my staff, that's money. Even though that's a piece of paper, that's money coming in the door, because we are invoicing at the end of the season. I feel like we have a really good pulse on getting the, those vouchers into the right hands. Do I feel there's room for more? Absolutely. There's probably other avenues other than just the agencies that I mentioned. The other thing that I want to mention is Brooks Memorial Library. The Friends of Brooks Memorial Library, if you have a library card, same system. We have the voucher system. And then at the end of the season, we invoice them out as well. I have also reached out to, or actually, they reached out to me, the Women's Freedom Center. You know, reached out to me just, you know, last week and said, Carol, and in that situation, you know, can we have some, some passes into what we do with those punch cards? I gave them a $20 punch card, so that would give them 20 visits to come to the pool. But like I said, do I feel there's other agencies we could put them into the hands of? Certainly. And what that amount is would be at your pleasure as to what you feel as a board. Agencies, one that I should reach out to, and the number that you would like to see me disperse, you know, whether it be Groundworks or other agencies such, such as that. So that is really, really where I would be coming from this weekend, this, this evening, versus having the staff that I have at the pool having to make a decision and ask somebody, you know, what the economic status is. That's a really unfair situation to put these high school and college kids in a situation like that. So that's my story.
Well, Carol, that's magnificent. I mean, I had no idea that this was going on, and I think it's just wonderful. Some people have talked to me about, you know, opening up, like every time you open up the pool to a population that's not accustomed to swimming, you have to assess their viability, you know, their ability to swim and their ability to... So is that a problem? And I would rather leave it up to your judgment to continue your programs and expand it as you see fit, because you're knowledgeable about the situation.
To answer, to answer your questions, you know, a 4th of July is a prime example of a day that we have, the pool is free that day. And it's been, I've been in my chair a long time. It was free way before me. So it's just a tradition in Brattleboro. That is a day we have many, many different people coming to the pool that are unfamiliar with our pool rules. I have way more staff on that day than I do any other day. And I think if you said free, you would have to, I would have to staff up every day like it was the 4th of July that I said that there was free swim, because I think that we would have those that would come to the pool, because you just can't say, go for it, because there is more testing and stuff. Not, and we just don't, you can't, not everybody can go out and go off into 12 feet of water and be safe. You know, so that's why, in order for you to go into 12 feet of water, we have a testing procedure that you have, you have to pass a swim test to be able to go out into that 12 feet of water.
Great. So I'd love to hear everyone's comments. I will note that a motion is not required for this item. I suggest that we leave it in Jay and Carol's capable hands, but please opine as you see fit.
I'll just comment that I like not putting the part-time staff in the position to make that decision, putting it, putting the voucher programs in a place where they can actually be doled out and with some thought and some, you know, adult knowledge behind it. So I completely support that, that line of thinking on, on those hot days.
Yeah, from what you described, Carol, what you're doing is, is great outreach. It's very generous. It's very, like, strategic. Maybe there are some more agencies that would like to use that voucher program. And I've been a lifeguard. My niece is a lifeguard for Carol, and I had a little discussion with her. And she said, you know, that would be terrifying to have just a sudden day, a Tuesday, when everything's free and we'd be making saves. We'd be, we would feel unsafe as staff, because there would be staffing potential issues, because kids bounce multiple jobs in a summer. And I, I like the strategy you have. I think it makes so much practical sense, from a safety perspective of your employees, the liability of the town, and the Rec and Parks Department.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think everything you're doing sounds great. I think, I'm glad the state brought this to us. I think there are big quality-of-life benefits for poorer families to have this kind of access. But the, the idea of staffing that does sound a little overwhelming. I think I'm sort of the mildest, friendliest no vote possible on this. And the thing that really pushes me over the edge is that if we were 10 miles landlocked, that would be one thing, but, you know, there's two rivers here. There's a lot of water access. I think, I think we're probably all right.
What exactly are you voting on?
No on doing this free on hot days policy.
Oh, yeah, so...
Keeping it as is, is what I'm saying.
Great. And I, my motion would be to keep it in Jay and Carol's capable hands. So can we have three nods on that? Do we need a motion?
Other comments?
Isaac has a comment.
So thank you so much for coming and speaking about this, especially thanks so late. I would love, love to see the expansion of this voucher program, and also the, encourage you, if this is agreement, to do what you're suggesting of offering the free passes to Groundworks, to the Department of Children and Families, and do that without charging those agencies, to be able to give some passes to their clients. And I would also like to explore what it would be like to offer free access to people with food stamps with a benefit card on days when the temperature is particularly hot. You know, that's something, a card that could just be shown that doesn't require going in and getting any extra voucher. You know, whatever we can do to, to make it easier on folks on these really hot days.
Let me just caution the select board with what Carol identified in terms of staffing and what we are all mindful in terms of cost for that staffing, and the idea of being overwhelmed. So maybe someone would like to make a motion to say, just, you know, appreciating this status, the emergency management moves that our Fire Chief and our Park and Rec Director have. And if they feel that it's easily augmented in certain areas, they will do so. But I don't feel that the select board should be directing them other than in that spirit. So my motion would be to leave it up to these two professionals to add to the system as they see fit.
If it's status quo, hypothetically, could we just thank them for the presentation and not make the motion at all?
Yes. Bingo.
I'm with you.
Oscar, I actually like Liz's idea. Because she's talking about leaving it up to the directors of these departments, the chief, to expand access as they see, see fit. And, you know, what you said about the rivers, for people who are out in west Brattleboro, they may or may not have access to the rivers in town. And the, the pool is a great community resource. So I'd like to be able to, for them to feel like they have, for our staff to feel that they have the leeway to, to increase access. And I'm interested, would it be helpful to have more of a policy direction in terms of, or more of a sign-off on a specific thing, is like the idea of the benefit card as something that could be accessed?
I think, you know, giving us that flexibility and to reach out to Groundworks, reach out to the Department of Children and Families, I think that is a good measure to start with for this year and I, and see how that goes. I also think, on a sidebar of what you said, I think Jay added some really good information in the memo here. And I think while we have the platform, we should mention this, especially Oscar, when you mentioned, you know, we've got some great rivers, you know, we need to talk about, you know, pool safety, water safety in our community, and how you can, you know, protect yourself, protect your children, be safe when going out there. And I don't know, Jay, if you want to go in and...
Sure.
Because I think, since we have this platform, it's real important to mention it, that pool safety, water safety is of the premium this time of year.
So certainly something that comes up, and we'll talk about, we'll revisit this in, in May of every year is our plan, and we'd like to do a video for it. But let's put down some notes, you know, always supervise your children around areas of water. Teach children how to swim. Teach children to stay away from drains in pool areas. Ensure all pools have compliant drain covers. Any, like, pools that are around your house, and these include, like, the small Walmart inflatable pools, they should be secure. So fences, gates with secure entry, so that, you know, you turn your back on a child for two seconds and they're, they're in the pool. Get certified CPR. If you're interested in get certified CPR, reach out to the fire department. We'll set you up with a class. And then if your children, adults are using Life Fest, make sure they're U.S. Coast Guard approved.
And one last plug, we have, still have space available in session two and session three for, for swim lessons. So come to the pool and get registered.
And I just want a real quick answer to the, we started to drift into, should we create a policy? I don't think anybody's prepared to create a policy tonight, because in that policy, you would really have to dictate, you know, what temperatures or heat indices equate to what. So, you know, free pool access for everybody if the heat index is 120 degrees. You know, now we're hiring on more staffing and stuff. So I think that would be a, a real deep dive that I don't think anybody's prepared to do tonight.
Okay. So, yes.
Yeah, Carol reminded me today that people 60 and over, it's free all the time for the pool. And that goes to your point, Liz, about the importance of cooling for elderly folks.
Easy.
And also, does that include the splash pad area for adults? Like for seniors, if they don't, if they're not swimmers?
If they're not swimmers, they can go to the splash pad, yeah. That's a true story.
And also, just remind us, what is the admission, daily admission to the pool?
For a Brattleboro resident, student is $2. For a resident adult is $3. For a non-resident student is $3, and a non-resident adult is $4.
Yeah, great. Thank you for keeping it that reasonable.
I'm inclined to go with Oscar's, you know, status quo, let it be, with the caveat of understanding that you're going to do what you said you were going to do.
I'm good with that.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Thank you very much.
I'll motion.
Gemma? You got one minute.
Gemma Seymour, District 8. I would just like to say that as a woman of color and as a member of the LGBT community, I would request that special attention be paid to vouchers for organizations like the Roots Social Justice Center and Out in the Open, because LGBT people and people of color are historically economically disadvantaged and experience poverty at disproportionate rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those suggestions.
Okay. I've got one more motion that needs to be made.
I motion to adjourn.
All in favor of Peter's motion to adjourn, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And I forgot to thank you, Carol and Jay. Thank you.